All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. What am I supposed to read here? Good evening. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Mountain House City Council and Community Services District for Wednesday, June 11, 2025. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Here.
Mayor Sue?
Here. Let's have a moment of silence. All right, let's see. Whose turn is it? Councilmember Green. Your turn today. Our flag is gone. All right, next. Item four, approval of agenda. Any changes or deletions? No, I don't see anybody. Can I request a council member make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as it sits.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Disco, Tingle. Roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries, unanimous?
All right. Now, let's move on to... Item five, public comments. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak on items that are within the city council's district jurisdiction but not listed on tonight's agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot take action or engage in detailed discussion on any item that is not on the agenda. However, the council may briefly respond or refer the matter to staff for follow-up. Any responses to public comments will be included in the next city manager's update and will also be posted on the city's website. Nothing? All right, let's go to item 6.1, Youth Action Committee update. Vice Mayor Tingle?
Thank you very much, Mayor Sue. At this time, I'd like to call Anish up to the podium, and he'll be giving a report on our Youth Action Committee who met last evening. He's one of the youth in the community, and he'll be giving a recap of what's happened and what the upcoming events will be. Thank you. If you would give your first and last name, your age, and your school.
Testing, test. All right. Hello, my name is Anish Grundy. I am a freshman at Mountain House High School, ninth grade, I think 15. So, I'd like to do some key highlights of our meeting that happened just now yesterday. So, our Yak dynamics, which is our tutoring program, has been very successful just so far, but one thing we mentioned was that we wish to have some more tutors in later years. And after that, both tutors and students have had lots of involvement this year. We wish to increase that in the further years. Now, from that, I want to move on to Yak Summer Camp. So, this Yak Summer Camp program is specialized for all age groups, and we're having lots of fun activities. And this is a budget for some of the weeks. So, for our first week, which is our sports week, it's $50 to $100 as a budget. Next one, it is our health and safety week, $150 to $200 as a budget. It's $200 budget for the science innovation week, $200 for arts and crafts week, and $50 to $100 for career development week. Now, on the topic of career development, we have noticed there's lots of, there's like a lack of involvement in this one because not only people are interested in career development, so we did petition whether to see if we needed to change the age range. And the majority of the council in our area, like the student council, said that fourth to 12th grade was a preferred age range to not only influence younger kids into their careers, but also make the older kids more inspired as well. Apart from that, everything seems to be pretty going well. We have enough volunteers and week heads for each week. And we actually have two main volunteering times. Our Juneteenth on the 21st volunteering, and we have three time slots. Our earliest time is 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM time slot, and that's followed by a 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM time slot, and then the 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM time slot. One more thing I wanted to mention is a Fourth of July parade, how we host every year at Mountain House. And the Yak will be holding the banner and will lead off the parade. So, we need eight volunteers due to the length of the banner, but I think we have it covered, right? You have all it covered. And I want to say a nice thank you to our CVGCA volunteers because they actually have helped a lot. And this cardiology event was very thankful for our appreciation and our involvement. And yeah, that was the summary of the meeting. Thank you.
Yes, does anyone have any questions?
Dan, is your light on? No. Okay, thank you. All right, item 6.2, we have Trustee Olson from the Lammer'sville Unified School District. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Sue, council members. Mr. Pinkerton, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. And while it's summer, there's not a lot to report on the happenings of Lammer'sville Unified, but what I do have to report is rather exciting, I believe. I'll start with a question I know that's often asked, which is enrollment. And we do anticipate beginning the school year with 8,100 students. It's hard to get a really solid number right now because, as you can imagine, there are people enrolling in school, and we'll be enrolling throughout this summer and moving in. So, for those numbers, we'll be more firm once we get closer to the school year, but we're definitely anticipating on the growth happening and continuing to go up throughout the school year. As for the summertime, our ELOP, which is called our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, is well underway for their summer program as well as summer school in session. And we're grateful for all the staff who devote their time and give up their vacations to support our students in those ways. And additionally, our maintenance and operations have been working very hard since, like, school got out. Right away, they've turned things around, working hard getting the schools ready and, you know, repairs, cleaning, deep cleaning done so that things will be ready to go in the fall again. And last week, on Friday, we held a small ribbon cutting ceremony with just the board and robling construction to celebrate the completion of the classroom building D behind the high school, which is going to be open for students in the fall for classes. And there are 14 classrooms and then two science rooms and some office spaces. And so, it's a really beautiful space, and it matches the architecture of the high school. And so, we're really excited about that and happy that we have that space for our students. And then finally, I can share with you that on June 18th, we will be doing a groundbreaking for our next K through 8 elementary over across from Byron, which will be Pombo Elementary School. And Dr. Nicholas gave me permission to give you an informal invite this evening, which a formal invite will follow tomorrow, but that groundbreaking will be on June 18th at 6:00 PM over at the site of Pombo Elementary. And we're very excited that we are getting going on our next school. And that concludes my report.
All right, item... Turn my mic back on. Item 6.3 is a proclamation recognizing the Juneteenth event scheduled for Saturday, June 21st, 2025. I'm going to read the proclamation, and Laura Johnson, Johnston, is going to accept the proclamation, I guess. All right, so, "Celebrate freedom and cultivate unity at Juneteenth. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring the slaves in the Confederate Territory free and formally abolishing slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and a half, two and one half years to June 19, 1865, in reaching authorities and African Americans in the South and Southwestern United States. And whereas June 19 has a special meaning to African Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the word June and 19, and has been celebrated by the African American community for over 150 years. And whereas the Mountain House community is rich when we are sensitive to the challenges and experiences of African Americans and use that knowledge to eliminate racism in all its forms. And whereas this year, the Mountain House community will celebrate freedom and cultivate unity at the Third Annual Juneteenth Celebration at Central Community Park on June 21st, 2025." Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Mountain House does hereby declare June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in Mountain House, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African American history and in the heritage of our nation and city, dated this 11th day of June, 2025. Signed by the mayor. All right, Laura, come on up. Johnson, Johnston. All right, what's next? Item 6.4 is a proclamation proclaiming July as National Parks and Rec Month. Laura Johnson, you get to accept this one, too. Lucky you. I thought it was about the show, but it's not, is it? All right, let's do this again. "Celebrate July as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas since 1985, Parks and Recreation Month has been celebrated nationwide each July to highlight the vital role Parks and Recreation play in building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities. And whereas this year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, recognizes the essential contributions of park and recreational recreation professionals who maintain and enhance our community spaces. And whereas Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness, offering opportunities for physical activity and time in nature that improve mental health, cognitive function, and overall well-being. And whereas recreation programs support childhood development through youth sports, educational activities, and after-school programs, while also fostering community safety, inclusion. And whereas parks contribute to the local economic prosperity by increasing property values, attracting tourism and businesses, and preserving natural beauty. And whereas the City of Mountain House values its park and recreation services for enhancing quality of life and encouraging outdoor connection and community engagement. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Mountain House hereby proclaims July 2025 as Park and Recreation Month and encourages all residents to enjoy and support their local parks and recreation programs. Dated, again, 11th day of June, 2025. Signed by the mayor." All right, did Steve come back? We lost him. He came in. He snuck in. All right, now, we're going to move on to 6.5. We're going to have a proclamation proclaiming June as Internal Health Awareness Month. Councilmember Disco, you have a statement? All right.
All right. I come to you today not only as your elected representative, but as a fellow human being navigating a challenge that affects far more of us than we choose to acknowledge. Internal health conditions, a slew of issues that compel many on the daily, myself included, requiring additional management for maintaining their day-to-day life with dignity. As we prepare to designate May as our, excuse me, as we prepare to designate June as our city's Internal Health Awareness Month, I wanted to share some truths about, some truths often buried by silence and shame. One in five Americans under the age of 60 will experience urinary incontinence symptoms in their lifetime, but most stay silent, fearing embarrassment or stigma. An estimated 25 million or 7.2% of Americans live with some form of urinary incontinence. Some seek treatment, more are too afraid to seek help from their peers or clinical diagnosis. These aren't just seniors or those with cognitive medical outliers. They include active parents, professionals, students, colleagues, athletes, even city officials like myself. Many men and women suffer quietly from childhood onward, enduring an emotional burden long before their elder years. The stigma is not only silence, the stigma not only silences people, it prevents them from seeking necessary medical treatment, support, and adaptations that they need for a full life. That's why I propose that June in Mountain House be Internal Health Awareness Month. One, to empower young and middle-aged adults to speak up in front of their families in clinics, and yes, right here at City Hall. Number two, to expand municipal resources, like supporting the addition of inclusive public restrooms in parks and providing discreet changing areas in places like our recreation facilities to come by ensuring dignity in our public spaces. Three, to promote private funding for education and research of conditions like neurogenic bladder incontinence and prognosis-neutral conditions that often remain misunderstood. I share this experience today as a reminder that our city is not just my home, it's every person's home. Embracing openness is how we build healthier, more compassionate communities. And for those of us managing symptoms with briefs or pads, medication, catheterization, or corrective surgery, our stories of struggle deserve to be heard, respected, and honored. Please join me this June to make a meaningful difference for those suffering in silence and those who simply seek the support and acceptance they deserve. Together, we reaffirm all internal medicine conditions are medical, not shameful. Our strength lies in facing them and not hiding them. Thank you, and I look forward to working with you all as we bring this subject to light. So, whereas World Incontinence Week 2025, observed globally from June 16th to 22nd, is an initiative led by the World, sorry, by the World Federation of Incontinence and Pelvic Problems, with support from the Internal Incontinence Society and other partners aiming to raise awareness of bladder and bowel issues, chronic pelvic pain, and other related internal health conditions that significantly impact the lives of millions worldwide. And whereas internal health is vital to an individual's physical, emotional, and social well-being, yet many conditions remain undiagnosed due to stigma and lack of awareness. And whereas increased understanding and open dialogue around internal health will help reduce isolation, support earlier diagnosis, encourage appropriate treatment, and improve quality of life for individuals, caregivers, and families. And whereas the City Council recognizes the importance of internal health to the overall wellness of the community and initiatives that promote awareness, education for all internal health conditions. And now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Mountain House does hereby proclaim June 2025 as Internal Health Awareness Month and encourages all residents to participate in educational opportunities that promote understanding and support for those affected by internal health conditions. And I'd like to present this to my doctor, Dr. Satya of Assure Primary and Urgent Care here in Mountain House.
Coming back. Now, we have 6.6, a presentation on Valley Link. Mr. Kevin Sheridan, Executive Director and CEO of Valley Link Rail. Where are you?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I think this is my first time as you being a city, so maybe I've been here, but it seems like, have I been here since you mentioned it? Yeah, okay. Well, I have a presentation tonight to provide an update on the Valley Link project, and appreciate the time to come explain where we're at with the project. I'm sure that's a familiar sight to a lot of you, looking at 580 and 205 every day that commute over the Altamont Pass. Valley Link project goals are to connect communities, to make new rail connections to the valley, be cost-effective, be a model of sustainability, and to support the California State Rail Plan. It's a mega-regional project need with benefits, jobs, the housing imbalance between the Bay Area and the San Joaquin Valley. Obviously, the, lots of, I think, the City of Mountain House is evident that there's a lot of homes here now because people want to be able to afford homes and that they otherwise not have available in the Tri-Valley or the Bay Area. So, housing affordability is a big driver of people making longer commutes. And we want racial inequity and income inequality. That's another thing that, you know, serves one of the state's most significant areas. California has climate investment priorities, populations for both state-designated disadvantaged and low-income communities, and it creates new jobs and promotes economic recovery. The mega-region's economic growth here, we don't have, I don't think the updated numbers from the City of Mountain House yet, but those are some of the other cities just showing the regional housing needs allocation. As you can see, there's certainly a demand for more housing. These are the mega-region's growth policies. We were promoting the mega-region's growth policies, and the circles are a little hard to see what those are. Priority areas of growth for, what do they call them? Priority development areas. For transit, that'd be for transit-oriented communities, otherwise known as transit-oriented demand. We also are looking to begin the service with the zero-emission vehicle. The state purchased some zero-emission hydrogen vehicles, and there are, which are also battery-operated. So, the hydrogen, a lot of folks tend to believe that it's just a hydrogen train, but it's actually a hydrogen fuel cell that powers a battery so you get a longer range. One of our primary goals in the mega-region is the regional transportation plans and MTC's planned area 2050 Tier One projects, which includes Valley Link as a 26-mile initial operating segment to construct a commuter rail service between the San Joaquin County Double Pleasanton and Bart, and with two new barrier stations in eastern Alameda County at Isabel and South Front Road, and then, of course, here in Mountain House. So, the original project, or the ultimate project overview, is a 42-mile alignment between Lethra and Double Pleasanton. And there were two delivery phases identified in that. And there's a lot of detail this map, but to make it, to summarize it, the lighter, solid green line is the first initial operating segment that was cleared by the Valley Link Board under the SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, and then also with the Federal Transit Administration's NEPA, which is the Federal Environmental, National Environmental Policy Act. And that includes the stations, the transfer station at Double Pleasanton, the new station at Isabel, one at South Front Road, and then Mountain House here at the Mountain House Station, and then what would be a layover facility, and then also included a hydrogen and heavy maintenance facility down where the square is. Sorry, I see if this had a laser. So, the board approved the locally-preferred alternative between Double Pleasanton and Mountain House, Valley Link Board, I should say, in 2023, and that was approving 22 miles of new track, four stations, operating for a 15-minute peak period, meaning that during the morning and evening, high, peak hour commute times, we'd run enough trains to meet the Bart schedule of 15-minute headways, and then during off-peak hours in the middle of the day, it'd be 30 minutes. So, the project delivery status for Phase One is, we're approved, Valley Link was approved into project development by FTA in May of 2022. I'm just going to go through this quick so I can get to the map and the updates, but the locally-preferred alternative was adopted in April of 2023. We just had the NEPA document approved. We've completed the 30% design. And then also, we're working with Caltrans, both in District Four and District 10, so that's in San Joaquin County and Alameda County. And Caltrans would be the lead for constructing the highway, or they would be a partner, I should say, on constructing the highway of 580 between Double Pleasanton and South Front Road, or for the highway portion of the project. In January, we had to update the estimate as part of the FTA's program. And when I say FTA's program, the Tri-Valley, MTC, and Alameda County have contributed or identified close to $800 million for this project to build it. And we use that money, Valley Link used that money to leverage federal money to the tune of about $1 billion to help make up the difference between what the costs were in 2022. Otherwise, there wouldn't be enough money to build the project. And I think I reported that the last time I was here, I got some questions on funding. And everything looked or appeared in 2022 as if we had enough funding to make it to Mountain House. And in 2023, we still were carrying a $2.2 billion estimate, but at the end of January, we received these estimates, and they had to be cleared through the FTA. we received these estimates, and they had to be cleared through the FTA, and they were updated as part of inflation over fiscal year '23 and '24. And the estimate went up to $4.1 billion to get to Mountain House. So at that point in time, we had a lot of sticker shock, I would say, at the end of January, and we were trying to figure out what we could build or how we would build to Mountain House with such a funding gap. So the additional funding opportunities and constraints, those funding sources would have to come from additional regional, state, and federal funding, which would either be a new Bay Area regional measure, a new San Joaquin County Revenue Initiative, cap-and-trade program, which was just extended, I believe, by the governor for the existing projects, and then, of course, the Federal Transit Administration's Capital Investment Grant Program, funding shares. But the $4.12 billion created a demand on the existing funding resources, and continued funding gaps on other major capital transit projects in the Bay Area, and a continued need for existing transit operation funding subsidies to pay for the transit operators are operating today. The money didn't seem to be able, or the funding didn't seem to be something we could look to secure for this first phase. And this table shows an estimate, kind of a comparison of Double Pleasanton to Mountain House. The green, I apologize, I had a laser here. Doesn't work. Okay. So the green column up top was on the left. It says $3.7 to $4 billion. So that was our total project cost. The column right below it says FTA share. That was the maximum amount that the Federal Transit Administration was going to contribute to the project, and then the total existing funding match was $635 million coming from the Bay Area, and that created an additional funding need between $1 and $2 billion. And that was a part of our challenge, was identifying where we'd get those funds. So we looked at a previous alternative that was approved in 2021, which showed a connection just to South Front Road in Livermore, but it didn't serve San Joaquin County, and it had to have a bus connection between South Front Road and Vascal Road, and it really wasn't, that's the far-right column, and it really just didn't give the benefit of the middle alternative, which, as you can see, brings us back down to, or brings the project cost back down to that top green column of $2.1 billion for the same amount of money that we've been carrying from the federal, from the FTA's match, and also including the amount of money that's coming from Tri-Valley, Alameda County. And that, right there, that middle column is a project that can still be delivered for the budget that we've been identifying for the last four years with the benefits. But in order to do it, we had to downscope, or I would say, phase project into two phases, which is a construction phase in the near term and a secondary construction phase, depending on funding. So the green line that you see up there is the same alignment that we carried in the environmental documents, with the exception of a little L shape at the bottom where it connects to Vascal Road. And connecting, or getting the Valley Link train to Vascal Road connects to the ACE system. So where the original proposal in the EIR was only going to go to South Front Road, it didn't have a connection to anything in San Joaquin County. We take the area and move it down to Vascal Road. Now we have connections to all the other cities in San Joaquin County as part of the first phase, but unfortunately, we don't have the funding to immediately get to Mountain House. So that's been our challenge the last four months, is trying to figure out how to work with the Federal Transit Administration to come up with a project that could still compete and still be approved. So as of right now, this project is approved under SEQA and NEPA, so that's the good thing. But the dash line becomes part of the second construction phase, and we have to continue to work with San Joaquin County, with the Council of Governments, and the state to secure additional funds to build that. So this is the first phase that we would be proposing, Phase 1A, and as you can see that little L, that is the new connection to get to Vascal Road. And then the dash line is the continuation of what would be in Phase 1B, we're calling it, which is the section that goes to Mountain House. The connection at Vascal Road, as shown in this rendering, with the ACE train on the right side and the Valley Link train on the left, would provide that transfer for people coming over from San Joaquin County that are wishing to go to BART, or they can continue, obviously, on ACE to get to San Jose. The table on the left is a map that shows the Valley Rail Program, and that shows the connections to other improvements that ACE is making in the valley, up to Natoma, Sacramento, and down to Merced. And then those connections, a line that shows from north Lathrop, Lathrop, Manteca, Tracy, and San Jose, those, anybody riding the train from any of those locations would be able to get to BART via the Vascal Road transfer or platform, as seen right here. So the Phase 1B to Mountain House, this is our next endeavor, is to look for opportunities to continue to advance this phase. We need to get support for additional local funding. That was the new San Joaquin County Revenue Initiative, land value capture, et cetera. We need support for transit-oriented demand, which Mountain House has abundance of, and that helps us compete for FTA grants. And then we need to advance the Mountain House Regional Mobility Hub, build grant application, and other regional funding, which was a one-voice priority. So today, the Valley Link Board approved of these four different items, which was to continue looking at this phased approach, with the first phase going to Vascal, and the second phase going to Mountain House, to approve the adoption of using a battery electric multiple unit, which is a battery-powered train between Double Pleasanton and BART, because it's very flat between Vascal Road and Double Pleasanton. Future trains could still be hydrogen-powered because there is a grade to get over the Altamont, and those trains have more power, or more range, I should say, because they charge the battery as they dispel, as they convert hydrogen into electricity. And then also, we're seeking federal rail authority, jurisdiction determination as an urban mass transit train control system. That's basically just for signals and crossings. And then we are continuing to pursue opportunities to advance Vascal Road to Mountain House as part of Phase 1B, so that becomes our next priority, is to identify funds to get from Vascal to Mountain House. The SJCog SP 125 funding request that is before the board this month at SJCog, we've identified a Mountain House Regional Mobility Hub, which was a grant that the city of Mountain House put forward, and it's, we're looking to ask SJCog for $5 million to contribute towards this mobility hub, which is pictured below as a five-acre area with about 250 parking spaces that could be used for transit and other types of connections to get to transit for the Mountain House community. And that would just be a near-term improvement, as we're still looking to build the rail to Mountain House. And I know there's a lot of information, so questions, happy to answer any questions.
Question on the right, Councilman, just go.
Yeah, so question about Phase A upon completion with the addition of Vascal Road. When Phase B were to complete, how does it work with a single set of tracks that diverts into the railway guideway under Los Positas to Vascal, traveling in an east or west direction to continue onto Mountain House? Does it do a switchback? I'm no engineer or conductor, so I don't really understand how a single track's going to divert, and then you're going to add a second phase, and where is it going to go? Is it going to start at Dublin, go to Isabel, drop at Vascal, then backtrack, and then continue on at South Front?
I think I'm pretty sure I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that's a good depiction there. So if I'm jumping on at Dublin, and I'm continuing to Isabel, now ending at Vascal as Phase 1, totally get that back and forth straight shot. Phase 1B happens, where do I go from Vascal to Mountain House? Why wouldn't it follow the Valley Link? Or if this is such a setback, why wouldn't there be a proposal to rather re-divert the existing? Again, I'm not an engineer, but it just seems like at this phase, it would make more sense for our residents if ACE train were to redirect and cut through, you know, the border of Tracy-Mountain House, rather than build, I mean, it's like reinventing the wheel, right? All you have to do is kind of bend the wheel here. It seems like a lot, like a stretch, if you're doubling a budget, you know, that was already pretty high. I'm just trying to understand. My main question is, you know, if I end up at Vascal in Phase 1A, and then Phase 1B comes to play, where do I go from Vascal? Do we backtrack and then switch? Is there a track diversion that sends it?
You're pretty good. You can come work for me. I mean, you're asking the right questions. I'll work for you one way or the other. So it's a great question. So where I would, and I'm going to get to it, but right now, there's an environmental document that clears this, and the funds for 1A would be looked at in a reevaluation. What I explained to the board today, because I got a similar question, and it's a very good question, is I see a lot of opportunities to potentially do something different between Vascal and Mountain House, and it could be a combination of things that I'm thinking could save $1 billion on the project. And some of those things you have alluded to, and I'm not trying to dodge your questions, just have to be careful because we have an approved environmental document. I have to go back and talk to the Federal Transit Administration now that our board has approved the ideas of how we could do some things different. I think that Phase 1A is pretty easy to explain. It's adding just about a mile to get to Vascal. It has immediate connection to San Joaquin County. The next section, which I've always, is a different set of complications because you're going through the mountains. As you can see, the purple and the green line, they mirror each other from Greenville up to the top of the hill. And that is owned by Union Pacific, and ACE currently travels on that. But we did look at some different configurations at the top of the Altamont Townsite, and we would have to discuss that with Union Pacific and ACE about maybe the potential to stay on one line further so that we could reduce the cost, and that could be a possibility. But again, those are conversations we haven't had with Union Pacific. Those are conversations we haven't had fully with ACE yet, but as part of that next phase or 1B, we would redo the environmental like we're doing for Phase 1A. When I say redo it, it's a reevaluation, so it doesn't take as long. But we would take another look at that and come up with different alternatives to, you know, to show the public and to show our board how we could progress some of those if they seemed like they were better and saved more money. But it is a great question, and it came up by my board members today as well.
Yeah, and it's been 18 months just to get this far, right? With the?
It has, but that was the heavy lift because it was two full-blown environmental documents. Revals, they're already familiar with the project, they're already in the pipeline. Our Valley Link Board approves the SEQA, the California Environmental Law. FTA already is familiar with this, so, you know, they are experiencing challenges for a lot of different reasons, even before this current administration. It's always been a challenge to get staff to review the whole country's environmental documents, but we've been meeting with them regularly, and they've asked us to come back and discuss this with them as soon as our board approved a plan, which we did today. So we will be discussing that next leg, and what they're going to ask for is, that's great, but we need to see what the other matching funds are so that, what the feds look for is the reasonableness to get to construction. So when they look at funding from the local side, they say, how can we match that funding of federal money and get to construction? Because if you do environmental documents and you don't have the funding to get to construction, those projects sit on the shelf, they go stale, and then they have to be redone every two years under NEPA approximately. So they only have, the environmental documents have, for the feds, have a shelf life of about two years.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Green, and Councilmember Green, and then Harrison.
So let me understand. So I've always thought that the purpose of Valley Link was to be able to bring the valley into the Bay Area, with the Altamont being the largest problem, getting people off the Altamont as one that commutes to Fremont every day. Now, hearing this, it seems like we're bringing more of Alameda to Alameda. So there's no Valley Link. We're going from Dublin to Vascal. We're not dealing with the problem of, you know what I'm saying? It seems like, how come we couldn't bring, go from the valley to Vascal? Because we're trying to deal with the congestion on the Altamont and getting people from the valley into the Bay Area. For me, to take the money that we have and bring Dublin to Vascal doesn't make sense to me. So we're still not linking the valley to the bay. We're increasing the bay. People getting from the Bay Area just to Vascal, we're not getting, we're not solving the problem of the Altamont. So how come it wasn't discussed to go the other way?
There's, I take that in two parts, if I can, Councilor. First, the naming legislation in 2018 said to establish an ACE-to-BART connection in the Tri-Valley. That's how Eggman and Catherine Baker wrote the bill. So when you think about a connection that connects San Joaquin, Alameda Counties in the Tri-Valley, that regional location was Greenville Road, which was in San Joaquin County, but it connected to ACE. So that was the link, was between ACE and BART. So then it was looked at to go to Lathrop, but the funding, there was no contribution by San Joaquin County from funding. So when you ask about why it's going that way, the funding has all come from Alameda County, and they can't use that funding to pay for projects in San Joaquin County. And I guess you could reverse engineer, let's say that, let's say that San Joaquin County had $4 billion or $2 billion, if you started in Lathrop and built the Mountain House, it wouldn't go anywhere. So you have to build the connection from BART east and connect it to something for it to go somewhere. So if someone in Tracy wants to get to BART, it will be a connection now at Vascal Road, and that's the way the original legislation was set up.
I get that part. I understand that part. I guess what I'm saying is, because I was maybe misunderstood that it was going to start in Mountain House and go over the Altamont and eventually extend more into the valley. So that was my understanding. So maybe I was misunderstood, but that's how I always received it whenever we had these presentations. I always thought it was linking the valley. Valley Link, the purpose of the name was to link the valley to the bay. So where will the service station be now for the interim?
For Mountain House? Oh, for 1A? Well, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to get a station at Mountain House, but the connection...
We're not going to get the station at Mountain House.
Not as part as 1A. That won't be...
Sorry, I extended the question. So like operations and maintenance, how are you guys going to run 1A without a maintenance facility or yard?
We've identified that at Vascal Road, and that is something else that, let me see here, down where that L shape is, there is room to put a maintenance facility there and a layover facility, which, you know, when we go reexamine Phase 1B, that should minimize what was going to be done on the east side for a maintenance and layover facility on this side. So the benefit to that is that we wouldn't want to build two of those, so we would minimize anything on the east side of the interchange that was related to the layover facility.
Do you have any other questions? Councilmember Green?
I do, but it's very disheartening. I'm very, you know, it's disheartening because I believed that we were going to be able to, everything I've heard has been from, you know, Tracy, even talking to them about getting their station, all the problems that went on. The ACE train already connects people from Tracy or Stockton, not with the ACE, but with the other one. not with the ACE, but with the other one, Amtrak. I'm, I am so disappointed to hear this because it really doesn't, it doesn't serve Mountain House at all. And to have all this work being put in to this project and to get here now and to say, well, we're going to start at Vasco, that doesn't help us here in the valley. So I'm very, I'm very disappointed, and I know it's not you, but since you're here presenting it, I have to tell you about it.
I feel that as staff, you know, our goal was, and still is, to get to Mountain House. We just need more funding to do it. So it's not that we don't intend to get to Mountain House. And I would just add that, you know, when I got on board, this project was not going to where it was proposed. It was going to someplace much different, more... When I first got on board, the Mountain House station was down by the square on the purple line. And I said, well, that's not Mountain House. That's somewhere in south going towards Patterson Road. And what had happened is on that yellow line, SJ cog had started a 205 managed lanes project where they identified what you're saying is the fixed guideway for rail. And I said, okay, no environmental's been done on that yet. We need to look at how we link up to Mountain House. And then that created a different situation because then you're not connecting to those other stations immediately in Tracy and Lathrop and Stockton, et cetera, or... And so we did the environmental with the understanding we'd get to Mountain House. It wasn't until this, you know, four months ago, when the estimates came in and we realized that there's not enough funding being contributed to the project to be able to get to Mountain House as part of a first phase. So we had to look at how we could break the project into two pieces and build the first phase so that we can generate and demonstrate the, all the utilities are connecting to the other cities in San Joaquin County because there will be a link. It just won't be immediately at Mountain House. But the goal is to continue looking for funding so that we can complete Phase 1B to Mountain House.
So I guess my, what I really want to know is, what's the ask here? Since we're not getting a station in Mountain House and it's not going further like I thought it would be going forward, what is, what's the ask? Where, where do we play a role in this situation? How are, how are you going to resolve? You know, and I understand it comes with funding. I get that. But, you know, what if you never get to over the Altamont? You only get funding to Vasco Road?
I would, I guess I could answer that by saying that as the person who was in charge of every highway project in San Joaquin County, those questions have come before me 20 years ago. And we built 205, we built I-5, we built 99, we built Crosstown. So the state has funded largely all of the rail projects in San Joaquin County, and it's been going towards ACE. But I would say what's new for Mountain House as a city is you now have a spot on SJ cog's board. And SJ cog can set priorities for funding, just like MTC has set priorities for funding in the Bay Area for what projects get funding from the state. And they can advocate to the state on how to program. But it starts with the vision in San Joaquin County at the council of governments for them to recognize that there is not going to be any more highway widening projects. Those type of investments are not attractive. Nobody's looking at them at the state to widen 205 to eight lanes at $600 million. The, the investments the state's trying to look at is rail and transit. So we need that type of vision and leadership coming out of San Joaquin cog to promote this idea of how to connect the state rail plan all the way to Lathrop like it's intended. And that means funding the piece between Vasco and Lathrop because there hasn't been any contribution in funding from San Joaquin County. And if we can't spend any money from Alameda County and San Joaquin County, we get left at building the first phase, unfortunately. So we're going to continue, Valley Link staff is going to continue because half our board is from San Joaquin County to continue to push to get funding. And we hope that at some point in time, we'll start to be heard. We have good representation at the assembly level in the Senate with our, our state representatives that are very supportive of this project.
I just, I'd like to interrupt because we have a long meeting, and I don't want to spend the entire meeting on Valley Link, which is really not anything near, close to where it affects us. So we can continue to engage offline, but I think we need to move this meeting along. We have actually a long meeting. So, well, I mean, we, we know how to find you, Kevin. So if we have questions, we can do it offline, but we need to move this meeting forward.
Okay, and I do agree, but I just want to make...
Would you like to say something?
Yes, but...
Yeah, Councilmember Harrison was first. Just briefly, please.
Let me go ahead and...
Go ahead.
I got a couple of things, okay? And I, I know you're saying that, you know, we got to move on, but hey, this is important to me. Okay, so question is, what's a timeline that would be, that would come to Mountain House? And what would the funding look like in 2028 where it keeps going up from 2022 or 2023 to now? So that, so that's the first part of my question. And the other comment I have is, why didn't you guys ever talk to ACE or talk to Union Pacific ahead of time? As you said earlier that you haven't spoke with them regarding this, something you're going to, you plan on having further discussions with them? Because I might have helped out a little bit as far as the rails. So to me, this looks like Governor Newsom's failed plan that he has with the high-speed rail, where that's been a disaster, and it seems like we're following suit here with the Valley Link and stuff. Because we can't expect people from San Joaquin, it would make no sense to drive to Vasco Road, park there, and then go to Dublin-Bart. I mean, they might just drive the rest of the way. So, but if you could answer those first two questions, I'd appreciate it, please.
Being as the former director of capital projects for ACE, I, I have talked to UP and ACE quite regularly, but we didn't have approval from our board to even phase this project till today. So I'm not going to discuss with Union Pacific different plans or ACE before we even get to the point where our board's approved of us phasing the project. So we have talked to UP about this connection at Vasco Road, and we are working with them on that. And I would anticipate as we look at other alternatives that potentially save hopefully a billion dollars on the project, that we will be having more discussions with ACE, which has been identified as our operator previously. And we will be having follow-up conversations with Union Pacific as well.
Okay, and what would the timeline be to reach Mountain House?
It all depends on a contribution of funds that are coming from the county that make it, you know, that, that's uncertain until we get...
You talking through the cog?
We are talking the cog. In fact, at the board meeting coming up this month, we're asking for some money just to get something started here at Mountain House for the mobility hub because we want to make sure that we're continuing to prioritize those type of transportation improvements in Mountain House because we intend on getting a project here to Mountain House.
And could you give an estimate of what you think the increase in price would be? If it gets continued and comes to, how much more is it going to cost us as far as billions of dollars to get funded to come to Mountain House?
Well, right now, the deficit is $2 billion. And that's in year 2025. So the longer that it gets pushed out, the escalation goes up, and the state actually pushed this project out in the state rail plan to 2032, and we were able to bring it back in, provided we have construction funding. So if next year, let's say, we were able to get some sort of funding commitment out of the state that allowed us to go leverage funds from the feds, we could get this project, the Phase 1B, back in the pipeline and start getting a schedule together to deliver it. And that's, that's what I hope we can do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick, quick comment, please.
No, it's probably gone on longer. This is a big subject. It's been going on since 2018. But the one thing that I did want you to point out, and Councilman Harrison did say that initially, Phase 1 and 2 was going to be one phase, and that was going to be completed somewhere around 2028. But because of the funding and the big gap in money, you're $2 to $4 billion, it's being phased. So unfortunately, Mountain House, because it is phased, we will be later in the project. And you can't give, I asked that question today, but it's not able to say when it goes to be, when it's going to be completed or done because every day as we speak, the cost of everything keeps rising and rising. So there's a lot of unanswered questions. But the main thing is that the project was always designed along the way to start at Pleasanton and work its way this way. We couldn't start out here with nothing and move the other way. It was never designed like that. But there is a lot of, a lot of issues to be resolved. But the most important thing is that Mountain House just became a city. Of course, we all know that. We haven't been putting any money into it. So now we have to help fund this. So that's another thing, too, in which he pointed out, and I'm sure you guys picked up on it. Now that we're a city and we will be putting into and supporting this, we will have a say-so on SJ cog. And the two of you gentlemen sit on SJ cog, so you'll be fighting for this, right? And the other thing is that we do have Assemblywoman Rodija Ranson and McNerney that are actively working on this. And there was a report came in today. They're fighting in our behalf. So that's our political government in action that is fighting for us and holding themselves accountable. And that's the end of the comment. But it is a long subject, but it's easy to, to go online and read up on the history of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Kevin, for the update. We're going to move on to item seven.
We were going to break. Get this, do a brief break.
All right, we're taking a five-minute break for Amanda. We're taking a five-minute break for Amanda. All right. Let's call this meeting back to order. Seven point one minutes of May 27th. Are you guys ready? Any items you wanna pull from the consent calendar? Doesn't look like it. Can somebody make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Could I get a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
All right. Let's move on to item eight point one. Approve a decrease in the fiscal year 2024-25 appropriations limit and establish the 2025-26 appropriations limit and adopt the fiscal year 2025-26 budget.
Go ahead and announce eight point two as well. We're gonna do it at the same time.
Eight point two, we're gonna do at the same time. Adopt the fiscal year 25-26 budget and related actions. Thomas?
I'll start and then turn it over to Thomas. This is a update from what we, as you know, we had a study session about a month ago where we, you can see on May 14th, we had our budget workshop, which was the culmination of a lot of work over the last six months. And then this evening, based on the feedback we received on May 14th, we're coming back with our final presentation. Reminder of our budget is consistent with these eight key bullet points in our strategic plan, those being those, the council priorities. Next slide. And a reminder of our eight key budget principles that we're following as we do our budget each year. Talked about that a lot at the last meeting and last year, so I won't belabor it here. Just a reminder that Thomas just keeps racking up the awards, he and his staff. And here we are. You can see a lot happening in the north and south end of the community. So I, we always start out with this in the budget because it's a reminder that every city is growing and dynamic and evolving and changing over time. But when you're one of the fastest-growing communities in the state, it's an even more intensive process to figure out how we continue to grow our community. But at the same time, a lot of our infrastructure now is two decades old. So we're both, we've got a, we've got a smaller built-out city, built between 2002 and about 2011. And then we've got our newer community that we're continuing to build upon. And so over half of our, if you look at all our accepted improvements, over half of them are over, keep going. The, over half of those improvements are over a decade old now and require a lot more care and feeding than we've had in the past. And it just, in this next slide, talks about just the incredible amount of infrastructure that we have to maintain at this point in time. It's a lot different than, you know, 2005 or 2010 or 2015. You can see here, for example, we're up to 19 different buildings that we maintain, whether it's city buildings or pump stations, things of that nature. You can see where you're, we're over 20,000 street trees, as you know, at this point in time. Almost 12 million square feet of landscaping. And, you know, all that's gonna be adding up more. Doug will be talking about that later. Over 3,000 streetlights. We've got a lot of infrastructure now under our auspices to maintain. Next slide. So one of the things I wanted to talk about, that, you know, we always hear from the public, the frustration they have that, you know, it's really, you know, why is it so expensive? Why are my taxes so high? Why do we have this special tax? Why are we having to pay all this extra money for schools in our neighborhood? And, you know, why are mountain houses, you know, basic costs so expensive? And I think part of that is, is, I think part of what we want to do is remind folks that when you are living in a community, and certainly a community with all the amenities that we have, not only does it cost a lot of money, in fact, I think at this point, most home builders now have spent over $200,000 per lot in an infrastructure before they even begin to build your house. So that just gives you an idea of what the capital cost is that goes into each house within our community. And then, but I wanted to show you here, just to kind of remind folks the, the amount of both service and infrastructure that we have to put in the budget to maintain. And so we always have, you can see these three big circles where everybody wants, obviously, as high a level of service as possible. Everybody wants to have a great, big, giant lot where they don't have any neighbors that they wanna have to listen to. And everybody wants to do this with very low taxes. But the problem is, is if you want stable services and low taxes, you probably need more houses per acre. If you want stable services and very low density, that means there's fewer people to pay for all these things. You probably end up with higher taxes. And if you want low taxes and low density, that means you can't deliver the level of service. So this, this desire to have all of these things combined does not exist. You can't have low density, stable services, and low taxes and continue to maintain, these things work at cross-purpose. So I, I thought, I stole this from another presentation that I saw with some continuing ed recently, and I thought that was helpful. And these next couple graphics, I think, are very helpful for, for all of us as we try to help explain to the community what it is that they're paying for when they pay those property taxes and their utility bill and everything else. So let's go ahead to the next slide. So here's your typical neighborhood, your low-density neighborhood, where you're gonna have, on an acre, maybe two, three, four, five houses. You know, big house with big yards. So on that, that street, go ahead. You can see you're gonna have, whether you have two houses or 20 houses, you have a sidewalk, keep going. You have curbs, you have, and gutters. You have street trees. And as you know, we have a lot of street trees. We, we don't have utility poles, but we do have underground utilities. They're hiding out there. In many cases, we have traffic lights. You can see, every street has streetlights. You've got a water line that's down below ground that has to be maintained. You've got a sewer line, hopefully, down there as well. You've got storm drainage that we have to collect throughout the community. You've got roads that have to be paved and repaved, and we have to keep up with that every five to seven years to make sure the paving is maintained. And so you can see just on your basics, before we get into services, each, each house has, you know, you can see right here, five, eight, 10 different items that have to be built and maintained, just from an infrastructure standpoint. And of course, don't forget, our, our street trees are out in that additional right-of-way that has to be maintained as well. Next slide. So don't forget, beyond the infrastructure, we have all these other service needs for each house as well, including, of course, police and fire and schools, which, of course, everybody pays a hefty CFD for, along with the operating. We have trash and, and so on. So you've got those four basic services on top of all that infrastructure you saw. And then when you combine them all, you can see that you've got a heck of a lot of, so just look on every single lot here, all the, you know, all the things that, that, that tax bill, mostly for the city, a little bit for the schools, has to be paid for. And you can see on these lower-density lots, all these services are covered just by two houses. Next slide. So you can see, there's not a whole lot of money coming out of, you have to generate all that money out of very few homes. Keep going. Now, in, in most of our neighborhoods, we are, some of our neighborhoods, we do have more density. You know, we have some lots that are, you know, the attached lots and things like that. But you can see that the higher density you have, the more dollar signs there are and the more people there are to help service these things. But in general, in Mountain House, you know, we're a combination of the lower and the higher. And so on your utility bill, where of course you're paying that additional fee, there is a reason why the lower-density homes do pay a higher special tax and do pay a higher PFC towards utilities, because at least you've got a little bit more servicing it in those neighborhoods. But I thought these graphics were really helpful. And yeah, somehow sidewalks dropped off of this one. But I think it's really helpful in showing you the incredible number of services that are provided by the community every time you walk down the street. And then, you know, a lot of these things are underground and you just take them for granted. But there is a dollar sign attached, not just with building, but with maintaining all these assets and paying for all of these services. And so that's really, I thought, it's a good graphical display of what you're about to see in the budget and why these tens of millions of dollars have to be spent every year. Because right here, you've got a couple houses. And remember, we have 8,000 houses in our community all demanding these services, along with all that additional infrastructure we showed you in the first graphic. So I think it's a good way of showing the public all the things that we are responsible for and that we new, need to collect revenue for. These things do not maintain themselves. Next slide. And so, of course, you know, beyond the special tax that we're all familiar with, we, it, it's another reminder for the public that we are not the winner in the property tax lottery either. While yes, we do get that special tax on each tax bill, you can see that there's a lot of people who participate in receiving our property tax dollar. And we are up to about third place now. That number is an estimate. We do not get, since we're so new, we don't have the exact math on our, it'll be within half a percentage of this, but we don't have our exact property tax allocations yet because it does vary by neighborhood for a whole series of reasons. But you can see, we get about 19 cents on the dollar. We used to get 16 cents on the dollar when we were a CSD. Now we're up to about 19 cents on the dollar since we've taken on these additional public safety responsibilities that we didn't have when we were a CSD. As you call, there's some things that the sheriff covered in the past that we now have to pay for. But it shows you all the different players that also participate in that property tax dollar that's paid for by every homeowner in the community. Sales tax, I think we've got on here next. And you can see that we've got, we're tied for the lowest sales tax rate in the region. Now, we don't have a lot of sales tax generating uses in the community, but when you do go out and purchase a car, you're gonna be paying our rate, no matter where you buy your car, whether it's Livermore, Pleasanton, Tracy, wherever it may be. And it's not, and because we don't have a lot of sales tax users, it's a very small contributor to our budget. I think we'll be around 100,000 in sales tax revenues. Just as a point of reference, our neighbors next door, who have all the Amazon warehouses and, under current law, all that, anything generated by the Amazon warehouse, that sales tax stays in that community. You're, we're gonna be updating you on that. I think there's gonna be some changes to that over the next couple of years. Or there, the League of Cities is working with us to try to equalize that. So Tracy probably, Tracy's overall sales tax collection, not including what they get for their special park tax, which is 12 million dollars, but Tracy's base sales tax, because of the way they're now treating Amazon and some of these others, they used to be about 25 million a year in sales tax. Now they're up to about 66 million dollars a year in sales tax. And again, we get about 100,000. And there's certainly a lot of the sales tax being generated in Tracy from Amazon deliveries that we're hoping in the future, if they change the way sales tax or portion, we'll get a portion of that. But on the other hand, all that sales tax generation that they have comes out of a lot of shopping centers that demand a tremendous amount of policing costs and other types of costs as well. So there are some trade-offs. But right now, the cities that have the big warehouses, even though, yes, the warehouses create a lot of wear and tear, they right now are receiving 100% of the benefit of any sales tax being generated by deliveries coming out of those warehouses at this point in time. But a, as we move further along and talk to you about budget in the future and as we see what's happening with the league, we'll probably be talking about different ways of, of addressing sales tax in the future because we certainly need it to be more than $100,000 a year revenue source in the future. Some of, when we do our economic development strategy, that's part of your strategic plan, we'll be addressing that in more detail. But just for the public, this is more a reminder that we do have, we're tied with Escalon, ripping for the lowest sales tax in the region right now. So I'm gonna turn it over to Thomas at this point in time. I just wanted to give you that upfront kind of reminder of why we're here, what we pay for, and where some of the revenue's coming from. So on to you, Thomas.
Okay. Looking at some of the budget factors and assumptions that went into the budget this year. Workers will get a pre-negotiated raise to help with the cost of living. We will be adding employees to ensure we meet the services and needs of the community. Around 300 new homes are estimated to be built in the next fiscal year. Water and sewer prices will increase moderately. This is included in the five-year rate study plan. A 2.69% increase in special tax assessment, and some of the building fees will increase to ensure cost recovery. So looking at the revenue, we can see that the general fund is estimated to bring in roughly 14 million dollars, and this is used for everyday city services. The special assessment funds are estimated to bring in 17.5 million, which, these funds are used for the cost of roads, medians, parks, maintenance, and public safety. The special revenue funds are estimated to bring in 3.3 million. And these funds are used for specific purposes. The utility funds are estimated to bring in 24.3 million in revenues, and these are used for your water, sewer, and garbage services. The restricted funds, roughly 14 million dollars, and these are tied to specific projects such as new parks, roads, and other facilities. So the estimated total revenues that we're expecting for next year are just over 73 million dollars. Turning to the expenditures, we see that the personnel service budget is roughly 10.2 million dollars. This is for city workers, admin, maintenance, and recreation. Operational maintenance expenditures are estimated at 34, 34.7 million dollars, and this is for running services, fixing roads, maintaining parks, et cetera. Capital project budget is 8.8 million dollars, and this is to build new parks, city buildings, long-term fixes to infrastructure. And then we also have 26.2 million dollars for debt payments. And this is to pay back developers and money we borrowed for construction of the new facilities. So our total expenditures are just under 80 million dollars. And during our last meeting, we had a lot of discussion about the, the difference between the 79.9 million dollars in expenditures and the 73 million. So it's about a 6.8 million dollar difference. Expenditures are higher than revenue, and we will try to explain that over the next couple of slides, a little bit better this time. Okay. So looking at the general fund and the related funds. So here, we're looking at general fund, special taxes, special revenue funds. We lumped them all together here. So we plan to begin next year with just over 61 million dollars. We will bring in roughly 35 million dollars in revenue. We'll spend about 33 million dollars on operation and services. And so just for the operation and services, service portion for the general fund, the net revenues over expenditures is, is a positive 1.4 million dollars. But then we have a couple of transfers that are going out. We have a CIP transfer that's roughly 2.9 million dollars. And again, this is to build facilities like parks and roads in our capital improvement program. And we also have about a 1.5 million dollars going out to the utility funds. And this transfer is directly to the water fund to pay for CIP expenses, which are about 1.6 million dollars for the water fund. So we also have one transfer that is coming in from the CIF fund for eligible projects that meet the CIF program requirements, and that's about 2.5 million dollars. So at the end of fiscal year 25-26, we are expecting to have a fund balance of about 60.7 million dollars, which is roughly a 610,000 dollar decrease from where we began the year. Looking at the utility funds, we will begin the year with about 13.5 million dollars. We expect to bring in about 11.8 million dollars in revenue. We plan to spend about 13.3 million dollars. And on this one, we see that there's that 1.5 million dollar decrease in fund balance. And we have that general fund transfer that we saw in the last one coming in here for that shortfall. And at the end of the year, we expect to have about 13.5 million dollars in the utility funds, which is roughly where we began the year. Turning to the restricted funds. Through, the restricted funds are saved for special use only. We can't spend them on anything. They have rules. Most of the development fees are set aside to pay for roads, parks, and other city facilities. So we, we plan to begin the year with, our, our estimate is roughly 32 million dollars. We expect to bring in about 14 million dollars in revenue. We expect to spend about 17.8 million dollars on expenditures. That leaves us with a decrease of about 3.8 million dollars. But there's also a transfer that we saw on the general fund, which is about 2.5 million dollars. And again, this is going from the CIF fund to the general fund to pay for infrastructure improvements and other to pay for infrastructure improvements and other type of things that were built into the CIF program. So we see that transfer. So by the end of the year, we'll have about $25.8 million left in the restricted funds, which is a decrease of about $6.3 million.
Why do you call it restricted? Isn't this just CIF and TIF?
Primarily, yes. It's primarily CIF and TIF. Yeah, the landscape and lighting are also in there, but these funds can only be used for those purposes. So as we talked about the CIF and the TIF, only expenditures in that program can be reimbursed. And so that's where we see that $2.5 million transfer going from the restricted fund over to the general fund. So these are funds that we had saved up in the CIF program that now we can reimburse the general fund for these expenditures now that we're using them. So these were funds that were earmarked for the future use of the general fund.
All right, these are all funds that are meant to be completely spent over time. These are not funds that have cash flow. These are funds that go to build all the improvements in the community, and then we repay back the builders. So someday eventually, these funds become zero because you, as you're building your improvements and turning these into assets, you're paying these funds down, if that makes sense. These are, this is, this is money you're meant, you, these monies are allocated to spend, and the amount coming in and the amount going in and out really don't matter. It's, you have money earmarked toward building a new park or building a new storm facility or a new utility. And so the goal here is to spend this money, not to hold this money. This money is to go into creating infrastructure to provide for the new neighborhoods.
Okay, and to bring all the funds together on this page, we see that the general fund change will be about 1% or a decrease of $610,000. The utility fund will roughly remain the same with a $13,000 change difference. And the restricted funds will go down by about $6.3 million.
I see a typo there. That shouldn't say utility, it should say restricted fund. Okay.
The last, the third line should be restricted.
The third one should say restricted fund. That money we're spending down.
Yes, restricted funds, yeah, $6.3 million. And then, so that, that is where we get our $6.8 million decrease from revenue and expenditures. And so let's focus in a little bit on that restricted fund since that's the majority of it. So the decrease in the restricted fund balance is about $6.3 million. And where are those funds going? $3.9 million is going into the courtyard improvements, $350,000 into town hall, library improvements, and 2.5 are for CIF reimbursement to the general fund for program expenditure. So just again, these were funds that we had set aside in the CIF program that are now being reimbursed into the general fund and with a couple of other items, the courtyard and the town hall and library. So turning to the Cityhood budget impacts, we can see that some of the new funds that are coming in, about $1.6 million increase in property taxes, $480,000 from taxes when homes are sold, $85,000 from sales taxes, $601,000 from gas tax, $600,000 from Measure K, and 2.1 from building permit fees. So altogether, there's about $5 million in new revenues helping support our growing city and the demands. Talking about some of those demands, what we added this year, 300 square foot in new landscaping, a new fire station, 150, 150 new streetlights, 24 miles of sidewalks, 2,000 new trees, 20 miles of new roads, 200 catch basins to manage rainwater, 255 sewer manholes and 54 storm drain manholes, 111 fire hydrants, and one new lift station to help move wastewater.
One, one very big lift station, yeah.
Looking at the structure of Mountain House, we see at the top the citizens of Mountain House and then the elected officials. Below them, the city attorney, city manager, and city auditor. Our three major departments in the city are administrative services, public works, and community development. And then we have three major departments that are contracted services, which are law enforcement, fire, and EMS, and library. Total Mountain House staff is 55.7, but when we look at the contracted staff positions as well, we get a total of 170.3 people servicing Mountain House. Looking at the city debt, Mountain House could not have been created without debt. When public improvements are completed, the city then accepts the improvements and pays back the development community as funds become available. We can see that we issued bonds in 2019, 2020, and 2023 for the utility. That outstanding debt is about $190,000, or $190 million currently. And the utility subsidies that were, that are payable to the general fund are about 15.4 for total utility debt of $214 million. Our TIF debt, we issued bonds in 2021, and the outstanding amount is about $36, $37 million. Developer notes payable are 62.6 for total TIF debt of $99,600.
Thomas, can you go back to that?
Yep.
The 15 million that the utility funds owe the general fund, is that, does that count in the general fund 60 million or is?
It does.
Oh, okay, so it was in there.
Mr. Mayor.
Quick question.
So which of the utility upgrades, I mean, this is only a quarter of the, of the difference, right? The 6.3, but which of the utility upgrades are budgeted for the 1.5? And is that something that will be accrued to the residents' debt utility fees? Or are they general improvement funds from the civic budget? The general fund? Or the, sorry, the restricted fund?
The restricted fund? You're talking about the 6 million dollars?
There is a 1.5 mention of, of utility upgrades. What utilities are we upgrading at the 1.5?
The CIP that we're doing, that's for existing utilities.
Existing infrastructure improvement.
That's for updating existing infrastructure, so not a developer debt, but just money that we need to continue to maintain and do upgrades to the plant.
Got it, okay. I mean, it's only a quarter of the, for lack of a better word, you know, we'll just call it difference, right? 6.3, but I just want to know what it was.
Yes.
And we are, we are responsible from this fund to pay for it.
Right, the challenge we have is that when we did our rate study, BBID was charging us a very low rate for water delivery. And when new leadership took over BBID and they took a closer look at their rates, they saw that they were not charging high enough rates to be able to maintain the assets that were servicing us. And so after we'd already locked our rates in, and then, you know, we had to start paying a much higher rate to BBID. So when we do our next rate study, we want to be able to take that into account so that we don't have to borrow any money from the general fund.
And none of this is a buy-in to the improvements needed at the Old River pump station?
No, this is solely related to our existing pipeline that comes from BBID over to our water plant.
Got it, thank you.
So if you take a look at this slide, the Aqua Fire Storage and Recovery Project is the majority of that, the funds that you're talking about right there.
All right, so for, so for some of our water supply and redundancy is what that million and a half is going for.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll pick up the next couple of slides here. Good evening. So our capital improvement program portfolio, it covers five years. We have a portfolio of just around $23.55 million worth in capital projects. You can see the breakdown by projects on the slide deck. They're all, you know, there to improve the quality of life and improve safety throughout Mountain House. And just as a reminder, when we talk about the five-year program, it's really year one that is fiscally constrained. So 2025, '26 is what we have budgeted. When we look at years two through five, that really serves as a placeholder, and that's addressed as we go through future budget cycles. And we'll cover a little bit about what exactly is included in our '25, '26 plan. So again, we covered this a little bit back in May. Some of the projects are cyclical, they're annuals, such as our park replacement program. Others are what I call one and done. As Thomas mentioned, our town hall expansion and our courtyard improvements. What is not included on this slide deck, but is something that we have to address, is that we did promise city council that we would come back to you with a overview of park restrooms. We do not have that included in this year's, or future year's budget, but we do plan to come back in August to present what was council's direction, and it was, what are the permanent facilities? And also what are enhanced porta potty options to bridge the gap as we implement long-term plans in the different pocket parks? And so at this point, unless we want to dive into some of the particular projects, I'm actually going to hand it back over to Thomas.
And, and just one more thing to point out for the, the public is that in most communities, all of the capital improvements are city projects. In Mountain House, all new construction is done by the development community and then turned over to the city, and then the city pays that back through those restricted funds. So when you see our capital improvement fund, it's mostly an asset replacement fund, where what we're doing with our capital, since we, since we get all the assets new, our, our responsibility then is to maintain these assets and update and replace over time. And so it's kind of nice that we can focus our energies on managing the assets while the development community is focused on bringing in the new assets, although we work very closely with them to make sure that the new assets are built in a manner that we can afford to maintain them. We've been spending a lot of time, our, our staff this year, reviewing the copious amount of open space improvements and water improvements that are going to be done in the new neighborhoods north of Byron. There's going to be a lot of open space in that area, a lot of walkways, a lot of water features, all of which are, you know, potential major maintenance, management issues, and future replacement issues. And so we've been working very closely with the development community to make sure they're going to be constructing these in a sustainable manner. These, these new neighborhoods are going to have probably far more passive open space than we've had in any other neighborhoods. And that's one reason there's addition, and there will be additional assessments in each one of those neighborhoods to cover that added cost beyond having just the normal neighborhood parks. But we want to make sure that all these are built in a manner that's cost-effective. So that's been a lot of our energy over this past year, is making sure we're planning ahead for all these, you're going to see a lot of improvements getting built over the next year that then will be turned over to us for maintenance.
Go ahead.
After the, the last slides are just board actions to adopt the budget. So this would be board action, and then we'd have our council actions for the different resolutions that go along with the budget.
Again.
And then you had one additional action that you were going to add in for the budget, correct?
Well, we, we would just approve any changes that, that council makes at this time with, with the adoption of the budget.
Correct.
Can you go back to the revenue slide?
Yes.
The first, the first slide. I think it's the first slide. Yeah, I wish, and we kind of mentioned this last time, I wish we would just separate out the restricted funds because it's not treated the same. And then if you take that out and you go to the next slide with the expenses, if you took out the.
Yeah, the, the next slide probably does the best job. Why don't you go one more slide?
Yeah.
If you go in this slide, this gives you a good idea of what are the annual expenses, I think.
This is a combination of, of the three other ones. So if you were looking for revenues that come from the general fund, it would be this $34 million, and the expenditures 33.3.
But you, you know how the, right under that, you have the 1.49 utility transfer?
Yes.
You account for it on that side, but do you add the 1.49 on the?
Utilities?
No, you, you take out 1.49, you transfer 1.49 to the utilities. But are, since it's a loan from our general fund, shouldn't that just cancel out?
Absolutely, and it will, it will cancel out, but we still have to show that we're moving those funds over to the.
No, I know you're showing, you, you moved the funds, but doesn't this side gain, what's it called, the?
The flow.
Account receivable.
Accounts receivable, I mean, it should cancel, those two numbers should cancel out, right?
As you're talking about in the fund balance, we, we always see at the beginning the $60 million, which includes the 15. Technically, yes, you're right, and it will be in next year's. That 1.5 will disappear, and it'll be owed to us. But for, for transfer purposes and for, you know, we are moving those funds out, and technically it is decreasing by that 1.5, even though when we're looking at the fund balance, that 1.5 will go back in there when we're doing it for audit purposes. Yeah, I, I know it is a little bit confusing, but you're absolutely right, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
So really, we're not, we're actually balanced?
Yeah, you, because that one, 1.5 million dollars is, so yeah, you would subtract that from the 610 and.
So we're, yeah.
You're good to about a million dollars, yeah.
About $800,000, you'd be positive.
So there is actually, so if there were, not including the 1.5, the only deficit or the effect on the fund balance is 610,000, not 6.3 at the end of the day, once all the transfers of funds is done?
When you're looking at the general fund, yes. But when you look at the restricted funds, the restricted funds are decreasing, but those are funds that we're supposed to use for those purposes, yeah.
So they're going to the right place, but our general, our, our, our general fund balance is really only changing at the end of the day by 610, not 6.3, correct?
Absolutely, but if, if you take into what, what the mayor's saying here, it's actually a positive 800.
Sure, sure, sure. But that counts a year from now, not now, right? So this year's, this year's deficit is 610, or deficit's a harsh word, but ultimately, the change in our fund is only going to be 610, has nothing to do with the 6.3 after we transfer.
Not when we're looking at the general.
It'll actually be plus 880.
Sure, next year, not now, right? When we get the 1.5 back.
Technically, when you say next year, it, it'll be the ending balance at 630, 2026. And for audit purposes, we will put it back in there. That 1.5 will go back in there, so we'll have an $800,000.
Right, right.
It's the same fiscal year, so.
It's the same fiscal year.
Right, it's the end of the same fiscal year.
Yeah.
Right, okay, okay.
So again, it's just about presentation. The, the restricted fund should have just been separated out because it makes it look like we're minus.
My heart dropped at 6.3.
Yeah, but we're really not, because, yeah. So that's, that's all, same thing we said last, last time. Okay, any other question?
Yes. I have my light on.
Vice Mayor.
Okay. Going back, one of the assumptions was, was it special assessment is 2.69?
2.69, yes.
2.69, yeah, okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure.
All right, Disco, you have another question?
Yeah, I'd also like to ask, request that the council consider amending the budget to include the cost for the state of the city for its annual celebration to include an Independence Day slash one-year celebration drone show to coincide on July 1st, not to exceed $40,000 for the $20,000 drone show and whatever costs may be incurred for facilities and budget allocated that wasn't already set in the Mountain House Parks and Rec budget for this pop-up event that got added from the original budget.
The state of the city wasn't in the budget, or is it?
No, it's, it's not in the budget, but, you know, we, you know, we have so much budgeted for each event, and so the feeling is, is that depending on how much some of the other parks and rec expenditures occur, we probably have enough in there, and if, and if we ran into an issue mid-year where it looked like we might need to take a little bit more money out of fund balance, we would come back to you mid-year for an adjustment. But if you were to authorize this this evening, we would just make this an eligible project in the Parks and Recreation budget. And then if it negatively impacts the Parks and Rec budget mid-year, depending on what happens with the rest of our events, we could come back to you with a budget amendment at that time. But we think there should be enough money in the Parks and Rec budget to absorb this.
I mean, 40,000's shooting over the fence. The realistic, there's, it's, it probably only needs 25 to 30, but just forsaken.
I think the main thing we need tonight is just the authorization to be able to spend those dollars out of the recreation budget and include it as one of the projects in the recreation budget.
All right, there's two, two questions here, but you, you go first before we.
I, I do have a comment. We're talking about line items, and Cosma Disco was hitting upon it. I do like to see, in order to measure your success of how you're spending, I do like to see things listed as line items and not saying that we probably can get the money out of this fund. Because that's proper budgeting to me, have this a line item. Even as the small amount that the youth action committee spends, I like to see that as a line item, because I like to hold people accountable for their spending.
Right, and we would include it as a line item in the final budget.
You mean the, the state of the city?
Yes, we would, we would include it, we would place it into the budget as a specific line item.
Well, how much is it?
Well, he, I think 40,000's a good estimate just to make sure between the, the drone show, the potential rental of the stadium, and some of the other costs we're looking at, I think 40,000 should be enough.
I still think that's 30% over the, over the fence.
Probably 30,000, probably enough for everything.
We didn't all agree to the drone show yet, did we?
No, that would be the discussion right now. That's the, that's the decision we would need tonight is whether or not you want to include that in the budget.
The theater's cheap. So how much of, I, I mean, I have no idea. You guys haven't given us any numbers. How much is the state of the city part, and how much is the drone show part?
Probably about 10,000 for the state of the city.
And 30?
And the drone, about 20,000.
So total of 30?
Yes.
Question on the rec, Councilman, remember, Green.
Yes, since this is the first that I'm hearing about it, I would like to have a.
Yes, since this is the first that I'm hearing about it, I would like to have a, you know, an idea of really what we're talking about. I know about the state of the city, however...
This is, this is a rabbit out of the hat that I pulled and invited Amanda on to pitch this morning with the drone company that I contacted two days ago after feedback that we don't have fireworks in the valley this year, we don't have any drone shows nearby for 4th of July. It seemed to coincide well with our state of the city address in my eyes, and this is something, if the city doesn't take on, that I will then redirect and attempt to do in conjunction with the state of the city through the chamber and private funding. But first, rather than throw a bunch of people's logos in the sky, I wanted to bring it to the council for consideration and keep it focused on the city, not on third parties that would, you know, ultimately advertise over our airspace in exchange for a drone show for the residents, right? There's, there's people that are going to be commuting on a Tuesday, they're probably not going to want to come, you know, directly from, returning from work at 6:30, 7, 8, God forbid, a accident. This would coincide with grand finale to that for all of those leaving, as they have food trucks planned at 8:30, once the state of the city address is completed at the Mountain House Theater. And so we would be able to launch drones from Cordis Park, have them fly over the, across tradition and do a show over the actual high school itself. They can't fly over any houses or any pedestrians, things like that, so they proposed launching from Cordis Park, which we could facilitate at a $0 with a ranked security guard watching the field as they do it and set up, so there's no cost to the city there. It's literally all 20,000 going into the presentation itself. The only additional cost we would incur would be through the district for the rental of the stadium, using the 800 seats available in the visitor side of the stadium to be able to focus point of view southwest at the campus. And so we would incur additional rental costs there, plus rank security and probably Sam Joaquin Sheriff to monitor, so additional hours on, you know, those, those three items outside of the 20,000 drone show, which I, I don't expect to exceed, you know, $5,000 to $6,000. So that's, that's why we're asking, we, upon approval tonight, then Amanda would then take that back. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer them, but if we can please keep focus on, it's, it's very distracting when I can't present because people are cross talking, so, thank you. So point of order on that, please. And then, so yeah, so that's why I'm pitching it tonight. If not, the chamber will be happy to take it on with private entities. I just wanted to keep it city-focused, not commercial-focused, because this is a great time to celebrate, and, you know, we are doing something 4th of July, but God forbid we hit another heat wave and cancel 4th of July outside the parade, then this would be the alternative for people to do at 9:00 PM following the state of the city.
Ms. Councilmember Green, do you have a question? Your light's on. No? Yes, maybe? Vice Mayor Tingle, go ahead.
Yes, that, that is good. That is good conversation, however, I think that it's outside of the scope of what we're here for tonight, and it borders to me like on a conflict of interest. So I'd like to table that, because you're vacillating between council duty and the chamber, so there should be a clear delineation between what hat you're wearing. And so I think that it's, right now, it borders on conflict of interest.
Well, I think I just presented two different scenarios. Scenario A is the city council considers this and either accepts or rejects it, and if not, independently from my position on city council, the Mountain House Chamber will be happy to facilitate a celebration of the first year of Mountain House on July 1st as well, separate from what the city is doing with our own funding, whether it be private or internal, and we will rent the available facilities at the school, so there's no conflict of interest. So I digest, it's A or B scenario. Either way, I'd like to see it happen. I'm sure the residents would like to see it happen, and this is a time to do it, because we're talking about a budget and amending a budget, and this is absolutely the direction I've got from our own city manager to present this to the city.
Any other questions or comments about the amendment? Well, we're going to have to, at some point, make a decision on if we want to spend the money or not. And Thomas, what was your request again? Adopt item 8.1 and 8.2 together?
We have to do them in two separate motions.
One and two separate?
Yes, but, yes.
And which, when would we consider Councilmember Disco's?
The board action would be first, and then the second would be the city, so it would be with the city.
Okay, 8.2?
Yes.
So either way, we can approve 8.1 now?
Yes.
Any, any questions, last minute questions? Can I get a motion to approve 8.1?
I'll make a motion to approve 8.1 to transfer and decrease.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Board Member Disco?
Aye.
Board Member Green?
Aye.
Board Member Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Director Tingle?
Aye.
Director Sue?
It's the board.
Oh.
The president. President.
Yeah.
Because this is the CSD.
President of the board. Yeah.
Aye.
It's the board.
Okay. That passed, right? 8.1 passed. All right, 8.2. So I need a motion to approve the original proposal or the amended proposal?
So I'll make a motion to approve the original proposal with the inclusion of an amendment for an additional 40,000 in net spending for the Parks and Rec budget to be able to facilitate a proper first annual celebration of our city.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Can you go back to me?
You can actually ask more questions at this point.
Okay, I, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, but it, for me to make a decision like that after just hearing that, you know, what our budget was, I'm very conflicted about adding 40,000 to the budget, even though, even though...
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we...
I would like, you know, I mean, it's a great idea. It's a great idea. I don't know if it's a great idea for 2025, even though it is our first year anniversary, so it would make sense, but I, I can't say yes right now.
For a point of clarification, if we were to allocate this, say, to a 4th of July, the cost would be 2.5X. So doing it off of a holiday on a weeknight, this is the lowest show that they're doing for the entire week because it's last minute, and I agree. This is a very late pitch, and I apologize for, you know, catching everyone off guard with it. It's just, this is the only opportunity in the next calendar year that I can see makes sense for us to do something like this for the residents.
Question, though, you did say that you spoke to city manager and staff about it, so did staff have a recommendation?
To present it at this exact point in the meeting, because we're discussing budget and approving...
That was the only recommendation you guys had, was to present it?
Well, I think staff's been working, and Lathrop does something like this every year. I can tell you, in my days of Manteca, we always did our fireworks before, usually on the 3rd of July, because it's, as you said, it's about a 50 to 80% cost savings when you do this on a night other than the 4th of July. And I've certainly received a lot of input from folks in the past asking why we don't do a firework show. And in the past, I always talked about the danger, and so the last year, so as you've seen more of these drone shows, more folks are asking, well, why don't we at least do a drone show? So staff is supportive of, of working with the council to make this work.
I can see where it can work, especially when we, if we budget 20,000 for something and we only use 10, then there is money left over. I think it just, it's just right now, you know what I mean? I didn't have opportunity to read it in the agenda, to go over all the notes and stuff, so it's just taken me a minute to process it.
Right.
So, was there any more questions other than mine?
No, I have a comment, I guess. I get, I get it that it's cheaper if we do it on a non-4th of July day, and drone shows are, of course, safer than fireworks, I give you that, but if we didn't do it, it wouldn't be the end of the world either.
No, absolutely not, and, and, and I will do my best to make sure the city gets it one way or another. I'm just trying to keep the focus on the city and not, I mean, it's great to promote our local tax revenue, right? Whether it be a developer or businesses who want to contribute and see their name in the sky, I would prefer to see this being civic-focused, considering it just happens to fall at the time of the conclusion of a civic function nearby.
Well, the difference, again, Councilman Disco, is that we're spending, we would be spending taxpayers' money for this show versus sponsor money.
I agree, and at a dollar, at a $1.25 per resident, I can wildly guess that half of the residents would agree with the idea of having something for 4th of July and our city celebration in one, when there's nothing within 40 miles for them to attend, and it's not going to be an absolute rodeo to participate and observe, like a firework show would be, considering Tracy's not doing one, Manteca isn't doing one, I believe the Lathrop is doing one for their, they do a firework show every year for their city celebration, but yeah, there's nothing in Mountain House Tracy this year for 4th of July, and it's a little disheartening.
Is there an option to partner with private entities to do this?
If we, if the city Parks and Rec would be able to scramble and get private funding in three weeks' time, sure.
But I mean, like, if we split, so let's say it's 30,000, right? Then private funding maybe can come up with half, and maybe the city could come up with half?
If the chamber were doing that, it would be a conflict of interest, and I would have to remove myself from voting on this amended item.
What would be the difference if the show was put on by the chamber versus the city? Like, is the show actually going to be different, or is there, sponsors will want their names out there?
Obviously, yeah. Sponsor, corporate and private entities who fund into the show to make it happen would expect their name in lights over a, the conclusion of a civic event. So even though technically, as of now, as it sits, the state of the city ends at 9:00 PM, the drone show would be scheduled for 9:05 PM, so it technically wouldn't be at the same time, but we all know that anyone going to the state of the city to the high school is going to stay the extra five minutes after going to the food trucks and getting dinner, and so, you know, it would be nice to keep it civic-focused. Originally, the chamber had planned to take it on, and then I received feedback that I could present it to the council for consideration. My original idea was to do it on celebration of the city as part of the chamber's role in our local community, but I'm now bringing it to the council for consideration, and I won't hold it against anybody, since this is a rabbit out of a hat at zero hour to make a decision if everybody on the council but me says no.
There's just some other, you know, I, I'm not sure the state of the city ends at 9 o'clock.
No, it would end at 8:30, which concludes with food trucks.
Even though we blocked off 6 to 9, I don't plan on being there for three hours, so potentially, we could be done at 8:00. And then what happens to all those people? They have to sit around for an hour waiting for the show?
If we, if we have the drone show, we plan to push it to 6:30 to 7:00 for the booths, and then from 7:30 to 8:30 for the actual address, and then we have food trucks coming, so it'll be 8:30, 9 o'clock, they'd be ushered into the football stadium to watch the drone show with whatever the food trucks have to.
I mean, another highlight is press. We do this, we get press, we get coverage, we get to celebrate. On a regional scale, we do a state of the city, we're going to get Tracy press, that's just the reality of it.
Any other comments or questions? We got to move on.
I do have a comment. I know we're, it's out of protocol because we're in the middle of the count. However, this could be a good idea, but like anything else, when we're waiting until the ninth hour and making an adjustment to it, you're setting protocol to when we're having a budget meeting, we can add on things. I'd like to see this maybe planned into next year, but I'm not in favor of doing something last minute for 40 grand, and there's other things that are on a priority list that's not happening. And maybe I'm too practical, but that's probably, to me, part of my responsibility as a servant.
Why did you make it 40? Yeah, I thought you said it was going to be 20.
Staff direction.
To build an extra...
Because it's just the realistic, the realistic costs incurred, right? Yes, it is 20 for a drone show that runs 20 minutes with 200-something drones, which is a great resolution and can do animated, it's not your boring, you know, boring drone show we've seen in our area, 2023, somewhere nearby. It's a well-regarded company, they're, they're doing Redwood City's 4th of July, they're doing, I think 4th of July, they're doing three different shows from Califor, Northern California to Florida, so they're in demand. It isn't, you know, just Billy and his, and his 200 drones, it's, it's an actual company spread out across California that runs it. So it's, they're, they're a vetted, they're, they're a vetted provider. And then the additional 40, realistically, in my head, it was going to be a request for 26,000, but you never know what the sheriff's going to charge, the, we're going to have to, we would probably have to have AMR there. It's going to be just like some of the infrastructure required for Music in the Park, right? Additional rank security, things like that. So that stuff adds up, and, and it could be as low as 20,000 plus six for the rental of the facility, the security, all that, right? It could be 30, so padding it an additional 25% for unforeseen was the direction that I received from staff.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Disco started a motion, I think, and we started roll call.
Yeah, I had a second from Councilmember...
Second from Harrison, and Councilmember, obviously, you voted yes. Now we're going to you, Councilman, your member Green.
Back to me, back to me, back to me. You know what, I would love to do it. It sounds exciting, I think it would be great, it's the first year of the state of the city. Okay. If you can get some private funding to go along, that would really help.
An aye or nay?
Okay, yes.
Okay, that was an aye. I'll vote yes.
Nay.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
All right.
Motion carries 4-1.
And you did get my nay, right?
Yes, motion carries 4-1.
Plan it in for next year.
Okay, 8.2 approved. Is that it, Thomas? Are we done?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's move on to 8.3. Yeah, that's why you get paid the big bucks. Who's doing landscaping? Jody, it says Jody. Co-pilot with Jody. Who's this, who's this handsome old guy? I wasn't talking about you.
Good evening, Mayor Sue, Vice Mayor and Council. We're presenting the Award of Landscape Services contracts tonight. Staff recommends that the city council award and authorize the city manager to execute the following seven contracts for city landscape maintenance services for a combined total of $12,182,394.10, as solicited through the respective requests for proposals, and authorize the city manager to execute an optional three-year extension to each contract at the original rates and terms. Here we have Brightview Landscape Services for a total of $2,154,898.67, Gachina Landscape with five of the contracts for a total of $7,896,345.19, and Odyssey Landscape for one contract totaling $2,131,150.24. So since 2003, long time ago, City Landscape has been competitively bid out. I... I could say that back in 2003, I was the first person, first landscape manager to come on site, and it was one of my new projects. And it was something that we took on in the Central Valley. It only consisted of Mountain House Parkway, DeAnza Boulevard, and Wickland Park. And it took three people to maintain that for one week. Since then, Valicris has won about three consecutive contracts, and the previous contract award on June 12, 2019, was one point three million. And that annual cost has increased since then to two point zero-three-one million, and that's due to the city's continued growth and expansion of its maintained areas. And just an idea of how much it has grown, we're about fourteen million square feet today. Back in 2013, when I joined the district back then, we were at five point four million. So you could get an idea of what, in about nine years, we've added quite a bit of square feet, about nine million square feet. It consists of four million square feet of arterial roadways, over four million square feet of parks. We've added government facilities, we've added utility properties. We've added quite a few weed abatement areas, which are extremely important today. And we've also added community facility districts, which are the LMDs, which we're looking at over in Hanson and Cortez. It's kind of a new thing we're doing, I guess, and that's expanding quite a bit with the corridors and whatnot. So we looked at breaking up the city into districts, and we did this because the challenges we had in having a contractor that was able to take care of, you know, twelve million square feet. We looked at strategically breaking up the contract into areas of north and south for parks, evenly break up the arterials to east and west and north and south. And then we also separated out specialty districts, which are downtown government buildings in those areas, which require more specification and more enhanced maintenance. Weed abatement areas and community facility districts. One of the reasons we did this is, you know, the north and the park areas that we separated out are bid out and awarded to two separate contractors. And then what happens in that situation, just like the arterials, is you have two companies taking care of parks, and they counter each other. So it's not only a thing that increases competition. It is something that, in the industry, one contractor looks at the other. And of course, it really enhances the competition in the marketplace, and it increases the quality of the landscape. Also, what we have to look at is the fact that if one contractor is deficient, and it's a deficiency that's ongoing, there's another contractor that can step right in. So we're not stuck with one contractor for the entire project. This creates flexibility, creates... It distributes the workload evenly through three companies, and we're not dependent on one company to do the entire project. And of course, this creates other challenges in dividing landscape up. It will increase... It'll require increased coordination, communication, and oversight for multiple contracts, and to ensure the consistency of, you know, the quality out in the landscape, it increases our oversight of the contracts. So this will require, you know, additional labor in the future. Senior maintenance worker to oversee the operations. Another program manager to really analyze the contracts, make sure they're compliant. And this is something that these... Actually, the program manager is something we're working on right now, and the senior maintenance worker is something we have budgeted for the 2526 year, so. So by May 3, 2025, the proposal deadline, we received thirty-five proposals, which was good news. Out of those thirty-five proposals submitted, thirty were deemed responsive and qualified. Twenty-three of the proposals advanced to a shortlist, and this was due through analyzing the competitiveness of the bids, including the unit costs for extra work. We assembled a selection committee of public work operations personnel and maintenance staff. And so we went through each of these contracts and analyzed, really, the project understanding. They wrote up the methodology and, you know, the older background and everything on how they're going to attack the project. Their understanding, experience, and comparable maintenance contracts they had throughout the valley were analyzed, the methodology they submitted. And we also analyzed the firm qualifications. So it was important that they had the right level of staffing. And what is more important is that we called and checked references of other areas that they took care of, other cities, other large projects that were similar to Mountain House. Following this process, we selected Brightview, Gachina Landscape, and Odyssey. And they are merged as the quality vendors across the seven service areas. We entered into negotiations and finalized the scope and pricing and contract terms. Our current vendor, Brightview, received a parks package, and this is North Parks, which consists of Central Park, Altamont Park, and Questa Park. And they've been on site, like I said, for quite a few years, quite a bit of experience. I'm not sure if they're in the audience today, but we also have Gachina Landscape that is present. I'd like to introduce Jacqueline Ishimura Gachina, the president and owner, that is sitting in our audience today. And quality company. And Odyssey Landscape, which is knowledgeable on Mountain House, has experience installing. They won an arterial package through the bidding process. So what we did on the contract is, with the division of the areas, we also staggered the terms. And so the north and south park districts have a term of five years. The north and south and east-west arterial districts have four. And the smaller districts, downtown weed abatements and the CFD districts, all have three. And I did this so that we don't go through this seven-contract process again. And I'll let you know it was quite laborious in order to do seven contracts at one time. So staggering them will also give the contractors a better ability to bid out and compete with these in those segments. So it's our desire to be better managed through bidding and awarding through timelines and allow flexibility for future procurement cycles. Also, each of those terms, each of those contracts have a three-year standard extension that we may exercise, and due to performance and quality. So there's also... We have the following table that I will show you has an eight percent M&amp;R fund, which is basically eight percent of the base contract cost, which is built in to allow for repairs and improvements. It also comes with a three percent CPI increase per year. So this is the layout of the table, and it shows that the totals of the initial terms of the contracts in the first column, as you could see, going straight down. We've got Brightview with two point one million. Gachina has a total of five packages for seven point eight million. Odyssey Landscape has an arterial package for two point one, and that totals just over twelve million dollars. The city's current annual cost for landscape maintenance services, including an eight percent allocation for maintenance and repairs, is approximately two million dollars, just over two million dollars. Based on staff recommendations, the proposed total number of costs of all contracts beginning on July 1 is estimated to be just under two point eight million. This is a seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight million dollar increase, about a thirty-eight percent increase. And this increase reflects market-driven adjustments. It's due to expanded scope. It's restructuring the city's landscape maintenance program approach, and there's an expense in that. And so, before we actually put everything out to bid, we did some cost modeling, and we expected contracts to go up, and there are several reasons for this. We estimated, of course, through the six years of this contract, and of course, you know, if you look back six years ago, we went through the COVID, you know, process and actually went through supply chain issues and very high inflationary times. Also, the CPI increases were limited to three percent, so inflation that extended above three percent weren't captured. And in the process, our current contractor did not exercise the full three percent on a number of the years. And so they failed to even put in and increase two of the years. So you could see how devastating that could be to a contractor. But in reality, it shows that we captured that savings, but it didn't really cause a win-win situation. It causes a contractor to try and squeeze and profit regardless. So it was a battle to keep them, you know, keep them compliant, and it was tough to do so. It also did not include the forty thousand dollars that were bid out in the contracts that were not yet awarded. So that is something that, you know, I had to point out. So what we did estimate is that we were expecting a twenty-two percent increase in cost. And I thought I was going to nail that pretty well. It was reflective in our new budget, and it was covered. After analyzing everything, after the bids came in, we were probably about fifteen percent off. So if you figure everything in, it was a fifteen percent increase, all said and done. And that's including, you know, everything that's listed here. So we do have sufficient funds in our 2526 budget for the first year of cost of services, and of course, the remaining years will be contingent on future operating budget appropriations. Additional costs for their three-year extensions, pending staff recommendation and council approval, will be included. So the project projected cost of initial term of all contracts is just over twelve million. The additional extension cost of contracts is just under ten million. So total cost of initial term and extensions on everything, on all contracts, is just under twenty-two million dollars. So again, staff is recommending the city council award and authorize the city manager to execute the following seven contracts for city landscape maintenance services for a combined total of just over twelve million dollars, as solicited through the prospective requests for proposals, and authorize the city manager to execute an optional three-year extension for each contract.
Any council questions? Harrison?
Yeah, thanks, Doug. Have we already hired the project manager or the ones that are going to oversee these contracts to make sure that the facade's staying the same throughout the different villages? Or what's the timeline on that?
We're in the middle of that process, and so I... Timeline, I can't tell you for sure, but I'm sure it's probably within the next several weeks, we'll have a project manager onboard.
You said several weeks?
Yes.
Okay, because this starts July 1, right?
Yes, that's right.
So in the meantime, who from the city is going to oversee to make sure that if we approve this, that they're being consistent and doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Right, so Pedro Viera is our landscape supervisor. So he currently manages the Brightview contract. We will be hiring an assistant for him to help manage that. Also, in our new fiscal year after July, we will hire an additional senior maintenance worker to help in the process as well. So you bring up a good point. One thing that we're going to look at closely is irrigation and repairs. And so we're going to be auditing much closer, watching things much closer. And having three contractors as opposed to one is more difficult in a way. But in a way, one contractor is extremely difficult if they're not keeping up. So in a way, Pedro can handle the three contractors, but we want to enhance the oversight. So we are adding additional personnel to do that in the next few weeks.
And the only other question I had, and I think I brought this up before. With the CPI, I always see that it's based out of San Francisco Bay Area. Is that the norm, or they don't have... Does San Joaquin have anything, the side of the...
Well, if they did, it probably wouldn't be as high. The standard is Bay Area, and that's always been that way.
Yeah, there's not one. There's a LA, there's a Bay Area. Only... It's basically the CPI for all Northern California.
Okay.
Yeah, and it doesn't... The CPI doesn't really reflect the real cost increases that landscape companies have experienced. You know, if you look at the mandates coming across the board for electric equipment, you know, a forty-two-inch mower that used to cost them twelve thousand dollars to purchase now is in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range. So the mandates and the restrictions coming down are adding quite a bit of cost to that bottom line, and that's not reflective of the CPI. And you got fuel costs that exceeded thirty percent since 2019, and a few other things. So it's not only the CPI that's reflective.
Thanks, Doug.
Councilmember Green, question?
I had a long conversation. I really went through this contract, and based on my own experience working with Brightview, I'm not real happy with them. I haven't been. I was on our HOA board before this, and we have them now, so my reference is from that. So I had a conversation, a long conversation, with Jody with some of my concerns. I do appreciate having additional landscapers. I did ask that you guys are present, because I wanted to meet the landscape companies that were coming up. Some of the questions I have, and I won't ask all three pages of questions that I had. I will just ask a couple. And it does start with Brightview, it does start with the overseeing of the projects. And if you look, a lot of our areas, I do walk through Mountain House quite often, and a lot of our areas are not kept up well. So I don't know who's here from Brightview's staff. However, if Odyssey takes over an area that was once maintained by Brightview, and we find, and this is something that I had, that, you know, the sprinkler heads were messed up, and they all needed to be replaced. Then if they had to replace those sprinkler heads or any of the valves or anything, that means that they weren't maintained previously by Brightview. Whose responsibility would that be on? And then would we have to pay them to fix the work that wasn't maintained previously by Brightview?
I'm so glad you asked that.
Thank you. I have some more, but go ahead.
So the M&amp;R account that I described at eight percent is something that is applied to the base contract. So at the start of the year... So at the start of the year, it begins. We utilize that for repairs. Obviously, if they don't repair it, the money sits there. You either use it, or they lose it, and they're losing it. So we got about $70,000 on the bottom line. And if that is not repaired, and that $70,000 sits there, we retain that at the end of the contract. That is put towards the repairs for the next contract.
Okay, and also, I did have a question about the cancellation of the contracts. That in the event any one of the companies are not performing to what our standards are, what is that cancellation of that contract?
Short answer is we can cancel immediately.
Without any...
That's true. However, it's best to try and work it out. And what we do is we employ a, we have a form, I always forget the name of it, of course. It's a deficiency notice form, and that's filled out. And the really important thing on deficiencies is to make sure we document, and we document consistently. And we don't normally do this if a contractor is doing a fair job. And, you know, they get behind...
What is a fair job?
A fair job, to me, is no weeds, green lawn, and trim brushes. So we don't see that. No, I don't see it, and I know you don't see that. So, and I do agree with you. So I'm not going to sit here and say, "It looks great out there." The reason we're going out to bid and doing what we're doing today, and the reason why that specification and scope is so broad, is to do exactly that, improve the area. Now, also, the contractors that are taking over are experiencing a 30% increase in cost to take care of these areas. 38% increase over $750,000 per year is going to buy you a lot more maintenance, and it's going to really put us in a position to make sure they maintain those areas. So I expect Odyssey to come in and clean up those shrub beds, and we have money to replace the plants and fix the irrigation. So this has all been worked out and all thought out. And it's one of those cat and mouse games that contractors go through, and of course, cities go through. And I've been on both sides. I've been 10 years on both sides in Mountain House. I've been a contractor for 10 years, and I've been in the seat of the city, you know, managing those for 10 years. So I know both sides, and I know what they're doing, and I know how to deal with that. So they're not escaping with anything. In fact, they're on the road of improvement, hopefully, right now with the, you know, deficiency notices we did issue them.
And last question. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
But we are working on improving them, and they're on, hopefully, they're on course to do so. And if not, we take appropriate action. And what's great about it is we have another contractor that could step in.
Excellent. Last question, or suggestion, is that, or it's a question, are we looking at more cost-effective, more water conservation-type plants? I know perennials, they have to put them in every year, and it's like $100,000 every year for some purple flowers. I would just suggest that we look at some more cost-effective landscaping.
Right.
And water conservation landscaping.
What's great about having three additional landscapers is that they all propose, you know, improvements. And we guide those proposals and requests to actually install, you know, drought-tolerant plants, reduce down our square footage of landscaping with maybe some hardscape, natural hardscape that looks nice. We do have plans for certain turf areas so that there's less runoff on the streets and so forth, so that's all in the works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Louie, for going over this. I know the landscaping cost has gone up, but we've grown exponentially over the years, so that stands to reason. I do like the idea of having several landscapers because iron does sharpen iron. If you're the only person in town and you have nobody to judge your work by, I think that's a great idea because people know that, landscapers will know that there's other landscapers, and work could easily be positioned throughout. It looks like you did do your due diligence on here. My question is, and it feeds off of Councilman Harrison's question about having ample coverage to manage the new crews and getting them onboard. And I noticed in the budget, you have that at some point there will be another maintenance manager. Are you, and this might not be the form for this, but are you considering to, since you're going to use somebody with N, I don't know who that is, but are you considering promoting with N? Because I'm always big on if the people are trained upward mobility, rewarding people that you have, so are you considering that this time? I know we were going to hire somebody a while back, and the job went away. So I'm hoping that, we have grown a lot, and probably is warranted now, but please do consider hiring upward mobility with N.
Absolutely. I always do talk to staff to see what their interest is and to make sure, you know, their roadmap is established. And also, what's important is that whoever we do select for that position has the proper experience to be able to understand the irrigation systems, on how they're designed, how to inspect, and a certain level of horticultural knowledge.
And I'm glad you said that, because from my perspective, a good manager is up to a manager to train their people to be better.
Right.
So you're partner with people with N to make them be all that they can be.
I believe in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Public comments? Did you get any public comments? No? All right, back to council discussion. Are you still on, or who's that guy over there? Councilman Disco?
So I do appreciate that staff came back with three different vendor options. As mentioned, if one of them falls short, there's a little more competition, whereas Brightview currently holds the monopoly on Mountain House. So it is nice to see that we are delegating out some of these roles, because I feel like certain things do get overlooked when they have such a large footprint as of now to do on their own. So I appreciate staff for, you know, kind of seeking out, going through all the RFPs, vetting the appropriate companies that can facilitate this, and also for the competitive advantage of those who might fall short down the line.
I'm gonna throw an opposing view here. Sorry, Doug. First, if Brightview, who's been here for 20 years?
Yes.
20-plus years, hasn't been doing a good job, why are we offering them another contract?
Well, currently, they are not doing a good job.
But it's a 20-year, I mean, we have a long experience with them, right?
Well, I would say they're having challenges. I wouldn't say they're not doing a good job, they're having challenges. Now, being a contractor once myself, you know, you're dealing with different market issues, with staffing, with, you know, the environment, with a few other things. We have them on a plan to improve, and that's what we try to do. In a way, with what we've experienced in the last six years, especially market conditions, inflation, staffing issues, I'm not saying that we cut them a break, but it was more difficult to manage them, and it was more difficult for them to apply maintenance. And I think it was for so every company out there in the Central Valley. So in a way, when we have, you know, those market conditions plus then drought and whatnot, you do come up with some issues. When we put this out to bid, it was an open bid. Anybody could bid on it. And it was assessed in a way that was evenly and equitable. It did not look at one contractor or the other on what our feelings were about that, you know, company at the time, even if it was our incumbent, you know, company. So it was a competitive bid. And Brightview is actually a quality company. It's the biggest company in the nation, and it does have major resources and quite a few people with quite a bit of knowledge. And also, we have to remember, they have the most institutional knowledge of Mountain House. And if anybody was going to bid this project out and do it correctly, I would say Brightview would understand what each area costs to maintain. And they couldn't wait to bid this out because they needed to, and they wanted to turn it around and do a better job. So that's one of the reasons why we considered them. But also, in what you're saying, it's one of the reasons why they lost 80% of the account.
So you're saying out of the seven areas, they bid all seven, but they only won one?
That's correct.
The second part of my question comment is that...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to correct. I don't like the word bid. This is a qualifications-based, this isn't low-competitive bid. It's not based on cost alone, so I just wanted to clarify that.
What's the better term, then?
It's proposals. It's a, the procurement process was a request for proposals. As opposed to competitive low bid.
The other comment is that, isn't it easier to manage one company? You have one person to call instead of three different people to call? It seems like this is additional work.
Well, for each company, they do have an account manager.
Right, but now you're...
For each company, they have irrigation techs. So if you think about it, you're multiplying the point of contacts, you're multiplying the supervision by three.
And I guess the third question, which again, we've never really gotten a good answer, is how do you measure quality in a landscaping company?
Quality is based upon the scope and specification of the contract. The scope states that weeds cannot extend over four inches. It states specifications in there for everything. Lawns have to be green, they have to have a certain color, they have to be fertilized at a certain time. Everything in that scope has to be followed. And that's what's pretty much easy about managing these contracts. But it's difficult to, I would say, making sure they do it. There's a lot of moving parts in a landscaping, it's contract, in a lot of areas. Once a landscaper gets behind, it requires twice as much labor to get caught up, and especially in this time of year.
I guess, you know, it's just hard. Let's use a very small area like Bethany Park, for example. You know, how many square feet is it already? Is it by acres?
Five-acre park.
Five-acre park. Whole bunch of square feet. I mean, if there's weeds in 10% of it, does that mean they're failing?
I would say the quality's down, and they have to be notified to clean it up, and they should clean it up within the week.
Okay, you want to add?
Well, I just, they have to be notified to clean it up. We shouldn't have to notify them to clean it up. And that's where my issue comes in, is because, you know, when I'm walking down and I see half the bush is green, but the other half the bush is brown, and then there's dirt all there, we shouldn't have to call them, because you could see it driving. So you know what I'm saying? It's not, you shouldn't have to call them. It's not hidden.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, in the world of contracting and services, if they did their job like that, you wouldn't need me. You know, it's one of those things where it has to be monitored.
I get that, and I get that it has to be monitored, and I get that that's, you know, that's your job and stuff, too. Like I was telling Jody, if you walk down the path by the creek and you just look to the side, it just, some things should not just have to be, and that's not just for Brightview. Yes, I am very dissatisfied with them, but that's not just for Brightview. That's for the other companies that's coming on, too. They need to understand what the expectation is. And so, I don't know if they got comfortable because they were the only one. I think that we should have three different ones, because I feel like they've had the monopoly and really have just kind of did what they wanted to do, like, you know, Wild Wild West. I get that, but it's bad. So, you know, it cost us more money to have to keep replacing stuff than to bring somebody in that's going to maintain it the way it's supposed to be maintained. So, you know what I mean? You shouldn't have to just constantly, "You do this, you did that, that's not good, that's not good." I was telling Jody, I was driving down the street, the guy was blowing the leaves, but he was blowing them on the cars. He didn't put the thing down or whatever, you know, it's like, "I'm here, I'm blowing, you guys driving, too bad." You know, but then if a rock or something hits a window or a car, then that's going to be on us. So that's might seem little, but those things are kind of important. Put your leaf blower down a little bit, so you don't damage somebody's vehicle. You shouldn't have to tell somebody, Doug, to put your blower down. Okay, I got three pages worth of notes. You want me to go through all 26 of them?
Let me go to council, let me go to councilman, just go first.
So I understand there's organizational changes and things. Brightview just became a publicly-trained entity six years ago, right? And they're going through organizational changes and stuff. My only question is, if you admit a company like this is already failing and not following the SOP that they have in our agreement, why even include them in the new one? Why not give a little bit more to Odyssey or consider a third vendor? Because again, we still have three competitors, right? We still have three contenders that we can pit against each other, so to speak, right? If you're not doing it, then we're just going to extend the contract to these guys who are doing it better, right? Because I share the sentiment of things that have to get reported, you know, low-hanging branches that hit my head when I'm walking down a sidewalk. It's like, it's no-brainer stuff. If you're doing the job, you're walking by it, it's like, a council member shouldn't have to call it out, a city resident shouldn't have to constantly complain. And I can't say, as of late, it's been very often, but over the past few years, I have gotten a substantial amount of feedback regarding landscaping. So I just want to understand, you know, why the consideration, aside from their legacy of the services, they did hold true and standard up until four-ish years ago when things started to slip. You know, as we scaled out, right, we added more workload, they accepted more workload, they increased their budget with us, but they didn't fill the obligation, right? So I just want kind of to understand your thinking on that versus accepting a third.
Yeah, the proposal process is quality based on how we select. So Valley, or Brightview came in third place. The fourth-place company, I don't think you guys would be pleased with. It's a situation where when we did call references and we did research the company and whatnot, they did not deserve that position. And in reality, you know, we selected the best companies to come in and maintain Mountain House. Now, like I said earlier, they are on a plan to improve. And the plan will ultimately improve them, or the ultimate will happen. And I'm not going to down-talk any other company out there, or even Brightview at this point, is that we're working with Brightview to improve. And that's why they were allowed to bid and awarded in that section. But like I said, they're on a course.
I mean, ultimately, you know, if you didn't tell me, yes, Brightview's failing, right? And if there wasn't clearly the organizational issues that becoming a public company have with growing pains and taking on too much to scale, right? Like, would Odyssey be able to scale and fill where we only maybe have two? And I'm not trying to flip this whole thing, I know we're down to the wire here to approve this and the renewal of this contract, but how far out is it that Odyssey could fill that other 2.14, or 2.154?
Either Odyssey or Gachina could fill that spot. So that's the beauty of having three contractors on site.
So what point, after how many strikes do we give our current vendor to the point that, you know, ultimately, we're bleeding money, right? If you admit they're not fulfilling the contract, we're bleeding money, waiting to finally say, "Okay, okay, okay, we've had enough." Like, at what point is enough? Because I just want to understand, what point do you drop the gavel and say, "Okay, you're done"?
Without disclosing too much, we're in that process.
Councilmember Harrison?
Councilmember Harrison.
So they're on a PIP, basically, right? That's what we call it.
Performance Improvement Plan.
I guess you would say that.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry, Ron, I don't...
Yeah, with terms.
No, 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 I got it.
Okay.
I know what a PIP is.
But is, so how long is it? How long is it? Is it a six-month? PIP, is it a three-month? Is it a year?
What we would really like to see is, you know, for the contract to be awarded. And of course, the square footage cost is going up, so they would apply the proper level of maintenance, which then, they have no excuses. And we're paying top dollar for quality service. At that point, the carryover of what's occurring now will probably continue into their next contract term. And so, the process throughout several weeks, possibly two or three months, could go on. But, you know, dealing with a contractor that's falling behind and not bringing the quality likes required in the contract is a serious subject. And so, we closely monitor and document. And when it comes down to it, you know, we will make that decision. And I'm telling you now that it's a serious matter. We take it very, very seriously. And they are in charge of one of our largest parks, and that's been a concern. And so, it's being watched very carefully.
Any other questions or comments? It's getting late. Do you have one?
I was just going to make a comment, which is brought up. If they're on some type of plan, a performance improvement plan, then by right, I think that we had to honor that. You know, you don't tell someone you have so many time to improve and then cut them off. But, you know, if history repeated itself, if they haven't been performing, then it probably wouldn't line out. But I wouldn't take anybody, have somebody on a plan and then cut it off because that makes us liable.
That's true.
Okay, if I don't have any more comments, can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we... I guess we've had our discussion, right?
Yeah, to approve the contract.
Okay, then I make a motion that we approve the contract, the landscaping contract.
Yeah, 8.3. Can I get a second? All second. Roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
They'll be on the PIP, right?
Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
All right, we got, what, eight minutes left? So, seven minutes left for the rest of the meeting. So Amanda, two minutes, Steve, two minutes. 8.4, City Logo Design, Final Revisions and Selection.
All right, everyone just take one deep breath in. Yeah, let it out. It's gonna, yeah, don't...
All right, meeting adjourned.
Here, just use this one. There it goes.
Flashing green light.
I was just giving it time to warm up and giving you guys some breath, so we're good, see? It was good exercise. Making sure you're still paying attention during my presentation. So I'm so excited to bring back our city logo. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So the city logo, this will be the public-facing logo, and it will also be complementing our city seal. I just want to express that this city logo will not replace our city seal, it will complement our city seal. So tonight, I'm sorry, I almost moved it again. Tonight, staff recommends that the council approves one of the final logo designs presented tonight and serve as our official public-facing brand identity. Some background, back in February, you approved the new logo incentive to support the city's identity. We then went on to do a six-week public outreach where we used all sorts of platforms such as the Mountain House Matters. We did eight social media posts. We publicized it in our town hall and library. And we also pushed it out in our newsletters. The city's LiveServe, which is about 4,000, almost 4,000 people subscribe to our newsletters. The feedback that we got from the community is they wanted common themes such as community nature, sustainability. The popular symbols were trees, hills, sunlight, homes, water. The preferred logo style was elegant and timeless, modern and minimalist. And the color palettes that the city wanted was blue and green and yellow and orange. With this city survey, I came back to the council on April 23rd, and you guys, you chose the modern and minimalist style, the cerise bri as a primary font. The key elements were trees, hills, sunlight, and homes. And the colors that you suggested, it was a split between the rooted-in-community colors and the modern sunlight colors. I just wanted to give you all the background of how we got here. All right. When I came back on May 14th, we presented five mock-ups. And we were given some great feedback. So I wanted to add a little bit of humor, obviously, because I have a humorous side, and I know our mayor does as well. And I wanted to come back with you with different designs and also with what you've recommended. So the final, oh, yes, woof, woof, yes. Thank you, Sparky, for being a part of it. So what the feedback was, is that you wanted a window onto the house and different colors, and also, I'll quote what the mayor said, "Just something different." So that's what we did. I also got feedback that that house that's on there, it resembled the Bethany portal. So I took a little bit of guidance from you all and redid, I went back into our history of Mountain House. And I thought about, okay, if this reminds people of the Bethany portal, well, Mountain House has portals, that's what we're known for, right? And so, I took the first-ever Wickland portal and crafted it into a couple of these mock-ups because that was the first portal that was made. So then we won't be, you know, "Well, we should use this portal, we should use that portal." Wickland was the first portal, that is why I chose Wickland. So I am happy to show you. I know you guys are so excited to see these, yes.
Drum roll.
Yeah, drum roll, hold on.
Sharice, you missed the last meeting, but this picture is a joke.
Oh, yes.
So you could change... He is, his face is like, "Oh, my God." No, it's a joke. That's not it, that's not it.
It's a joke, it's a joke. We, Facebook got very creative, Facebook got very creative with this logo. So I just wanted to take what the Facebook comments were, you know? Yeah, yeah. Welcome to June 11th meeting. Okay, here we go, ready, drum roll? All right. We have seven mock-ups for you tonight. I took your suggestion with the second mock-up, it's still mock-up number two, and added the window to the home. Then, like I mentioned, I added a couple of portals to resemble Mountain House. And then I also took some elements away, like a house, and then I added, also, the MH that you see in some of the mock-ups is the Times New Roman font that was used in the original Mountain House logo. Not this seal, but the, you see a lot of the entries, yeah, that have MH with the mountains behind it, and that's the Time New Romans. So I'll give you a second to soak it all in. You finished soaking?
Can we run a contest for the community to create a logo?
We did already. We did already. Thank you, Matt, for saying that. We did that already with our survey feedback. And the logos that came back were not modern minimalist that was given, so...
I'm still looking for the question one.
We don't need sappy trees on our logo.
Yeah, we took away the trees. All right. Our next step is, once this logo is finalized, we will push out a rollout to the community and start our digital updates, then signage, then vehicles. The community campaign will introduce the logo and its meaning, and will also update the documents, letterheads. Anything that currently has our city seal on it with, that shouldn't be there, we will replace it with. Again, staff recommends the council to approve one of the final logos tonight. The selected logo will serve as our public-facing brand identity. Any questions?
Disco?
Do we have higher-resolution samples, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, we can look at by chance, or just the...
No, I have what's on the slide tonight, just this. I don't, I just wanted to...
I know, we were a little grainy around the edges last time, and that was some of the feedback I heard.
Oh, well, yeah, these are mock-ups.
Sure, sure.
So...
So everything will be polished, there will be no gradient?
Yeah, everything will come out. Again, these are just mock-ups. This is what it will look like, but yes, I will get it, high-res.
Any other questions? I'll bring it back to the council. You have a comment? We should all randomly write down what...
I thought we all close our eyes, point at the logo you want, Amanda will come take vote, and then we won't have another hour at this meeting.
Okay, got it.
No, I am curious if we all blindly did this, if we all picked the same logo.
Okay.
It's a lot to pick from. Seven is a lot, you have five people, so you could possibly...
That is.
One, two, or favorite one?
Do your favorite one, your favorite one.
Yeah, you and Dan.
The one you like the best. Staff chose at one of our meetings, but we won't tell you, we won't tell you.
All right, give me your answer. Pass it over. Come on, two more seconds. You're taking too long. Let's go, Ronna.
I like a couple.
Disco. Taking too long. Don't show...
Steady long is steady wrong.
Don't slate a vote.
Is that a nine or a six?
Mine was in Sharpie.
We don't have any nines, so it must be a six.
Well, it's not unanimous. Actually, there are four different votes.
Okay.
What are they?
Sure, yeah, we'll do separate.
I mean, it's not close to a majority, so...
But what numbers did we pick?
Three, six, seven, what else?
Is there any two alike?
It's only three, six, and seven.
Three, six, seven, what else we got here? Two.
Two.
Three, six, seven, and two.
Three, six, seven, two, okay.
Okay, I'll change. I'll change my seven to a, wait, I'm sorry.
Wait, you're changing it to what?
I'm changing my seven to a three.
Three.
Now we have two threes.
So two, three, six.
10:05.
And you have a seven.
Three, six, and seven are left.
Three, six, and seven.
Can we get some public comments? From the public that's out there?
No.
I like two, too, but they said we could only pick one.
Sharice, you're not on...
He's running bets in the audience.
I like two, however, I like the darkness of the green tree.
I mean, we could change the green color too, it doesn't matter. We can change that green color.
Did we have anyone, anybody pick the same? I would pick between two and, I would pick between three and seven.
Actually...
Staff did choose a good...
Actually, I messed up. It was one, three, two sixes and two sevens.
Oh, wait, then move mine back to seven. Why did you say three?
Wait, what are the numbers?
Three was my second choice, seven was my original.
I went back to the original votes, three, six, six, seven, seven.
Six.
The six wins.
No, it's, there's two sixes and two sevens.
I could go either way with seven or six. Or three. But I'll go, I'll move back to my seven and go with seven or six. I'm good with seven or six.
I'll go with seven.
All right, let's re-vote, three, six, or seven?
I'm a six, but...
Oh.
Closed vote.
Three, six, or seven?
Yeah.
Three, six, or seven?
More paper.
Let's just expedite. I'm not turning in paper. We're wasting paper this morning. We're wasting paper.
Well, you guys have paper? Dan needs paper. Here, Dan. Hey, one more piece.
There you go.
What is that?
All right, you got one, too?
Yeah, I have one.
All right, pass it over.
Okay.
Dan?
She said three, six, or seven?
Yeah, come on, pass it over. Doug, you suck.
It's 10:07, six or seven for me.
All right.
Seven being my first choice. We should open it up to two, because this is going to take, we're going to be here an hour.
Pick one of the two.
Seven, secondary, six.
All right, it's three to two, six. There's three sixes and two sevens.
Okay, so six wins.
It's not unanimous, though.
Can you just bring, can we just look at those two?
Nope, it's on the screen. Okay, so let's vote again for six or seven.
Six or seven. Vote again for six or seven.
But we were, the last vote was just sixes and sevens.
Well, we already have, we already have a majority of a lead right now. So why don't we just read it aloud, everyone say their number, and then we go home before 11 o'clock tonight? 10:08.
I'm not...
They're both polished. At this point, we just need to make a decision.
If you guys like seven, I like...
Amanda, I like, I like what you've done, period.
Thank you.
I like seven also, however, I don't like that the tree and the grass are the same color.
Oh, okay.
So it just, it kind of...
Like if the, if the board hill, like the hill right by the tree, we could make that like a blue, maybe?
Yeah, but I, no, I'm gonna stay with six because I like the bold MH. I like the bold Mountain House.
Six is gonna look better. Six is gonna be something they can actually embroider on a shirt. Seven's gonna be really hard to ever embroider on anything that's not printed. Six is gonna be the easiest to embroider on any cloth hat, shirt, jacket. Seven is gonna be impossible to do anything but screen print.
Okay.
You don't like seven?
I like seven.
Okay, I still like seven. Do you like the thing that goes around it?
I like the entryway because that's...
Because that's Wickland?
No, that's how most, Wickland doesn't have one. That's how most of them are.
I'll give you a clue, seven is going like a more Indian style, so...
All right, that's not the... All right.
And I tell you, you can say why you like the style.
Now, I'll be honest now. Seven, six, six is not exactly what I asked for. Six was my design, and it's not... Six was my design, and it's not exactly what I asked for, you didn't complete it.
I didn't complete it.
I like the portals.
But it looks beautiful how it is. I gave it a twist.
I know, I, I, but...
I like the entry gate.
I like the big MH, like Matt says, that, that stands out when you're on a shirt or some...
I said that.
I know, well, you said it, all right, Rhonda said it.
But you will never catch me a shirt with this on, man, I don't advertise with shirts.
Well, what are we gonna do?
Vote for seven.
I would like to say one thing, I do like the...
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, what are we gonna do, we're gonna vote, what do we, the majority's at seven right now, so like...
Well, the majority is a six.
Oh, the majority's a six?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm fine, I think six is more scalable for the type of application we're gonna use it for. Seven is fantastic for the Facebook and social media cover pages and our website, but officially, six is gonna be the most coherent for everything we're gonna use it for.
And we're gonna use it for...
To the next step.
What's missing?
All right, make a motion then, somebody.
I'll make a motion to approve six.
I second it.
Your call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Martingle?
Aye, because I don't wanna spend any more time on this.
Mayor Stu?
Aye.
Fantastic, motion carries unanimous.
Great job, Amanda, thank you.
Great job, Amanda, thank you.
Hopefully, we'll never have to do that again.
Nine point one is, uh, city manager's update.
Very quick, brief, we'll call it the briefing, all right, as in brief. All right, just go ahead and show some, well, actually, Sarah, come on up, don't mess up the microphone, but I wanted Sarah to do a very quick utility billing update to introduce the city manager update, because I think that's probably the most pertinent thing that, I wanna make sure the council's up to date on. So don't touch the podium, just touch the microphone, or we'll lose it.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Just touch the microphone thing to turn that on, and that's it, no below, Sarah. There you go.
Okay.
And I'd like to say welcome aboard, we look forward to working with you, and thank you all for coming.
Just get a little closer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council. Steve asked me to give you a very brief, like, 30-second update. So, as you all know, our new bills went out last, on June 2nd. Our phone traffic says that most people were getting these Monday, Tuesday of this week. Every account got a paper bill. They include the new account number, and, uh, they also had a message in there that, uh, directed, uh, customers to our new portal. Just like before, it had the total due as an amount, on this particular example, it's $244.83, and then right below, it has a penalty amount that was, if you paid after June 18, it would be the extra amount. But as we've advertised, you know, countless times, we are not gonna be, uh, enforcing that, um, penalty. I, I think most people, you know, may be able to pay on time, and it won't be an issue, but we'll see how that goes. The customers who previously used a credit card for auto-pay, we sent them two emails during this run-up to, uh, the Going Live, to alert them that they would need to sign, uh, sign up for the new portal. For the customers who were previously, uh, doing auto-pay with their checkbook or ACH payment, uh, there was no need for them to do anything. Typically, when you have, uh, an auto-pay, it comes out of your account or on your credit card on the day that it's due, which would be 6/18. Folks need to register on the new portal if they wanna continue to use their credit cards, or if, uh, they wanna start or stop auto-pay, well, basically, uh, stop auto-pay, uh, using their checkbook, or start using their credit card. If you wanna make a change to the account number you're using, you need to, you need to report that on the new portal. You can sign up for paperless billing if you choose to. We had about a 30-minute window when the QR code down here wasn't working properly, it was reported to us. That was fixed, you know, fairly quickly, and the folks that are still, you know, saying they have an issue, some of them are using the bill from a, you know, the old bill, and of course, that doesn't direct them to the right portal, and they have trouble putting in their new account number. But I would, uh, I would have to say, I think, uh, things are going, uh, a lot better. It's been, um, an ordeal, and, uh, interesting one at that, and, uh, we're just, uh, very happy that we got this far. And, um, I appreciate your patience, and we would ask that, uh, you know, when, when you see things on the website, or, or, well, complaints or whatnot, to, to please encourage people to call the, the customer service number. That's the best place for people to get an answer. The, the other people on Facebook may or may not know all the deep facts here, but if you would, you know, if they would just call the office, that's the best way to get information. And, um, as you know, we put in a, uh, was that a YouTube, Amanda, I don't know, anyway, she did a little song and dance thing about this, and it was really helpful, I thought it was really good. And, um, you know, we will, we'll continue to do that, because, uh, we do have a few people are saying they're having issues getting on the new portal, and, um, I can tell you for one that, you know, does that on occasion, gets on a portal, um, you know, just take some patience, and, um, you know, sometimes it's not easy for them, but our, our customer help will help anyone over the phone get, get signed up, so we, we're there to serve, we're there to help, that's our only job, is to help people, so, uh, anyway, that's all I have to say.
One question. I have one question.
Question?
Excuse me, Ms. Roxelle, I had one question. First of all, congratulations that everything is brought over to, uh, our billing system, the City of Mountain House. I wanna know as far as billing history is concerned, what months will you start collecting history, will it be starting from January or February or...
No, no, we're, we're, uh, for all intents and purposes, we're a new customer under this system, so your previous history, um, you won't have that detail, you're balanced forward.
Right, not the previous, but I, what is, no, my question, I'm sorry that I didn't make that clear, my question is, when does your history start, the City of Mountain House history, it'll start effective what month that you're collecting history, will it be February, March, on, or, or April, May, June?
I think it's, I think it's March.
You think it's March?
But, I mean, all the, all the balances due from the other customers came over, so we know where to start, and we also have access, um, at our level, in, in some respects to that history, it won't be available to the customers, but we can do some research.
Okay, so history will start from March timeframe, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, Steve, you got about 38 seconds.
30 seconds, okay. Okay, just some more photos of everything going on up north right now, and we're continuing to do more architectural review for additional subdivisions that are going in north of Byron. And a lot of work being done, both, uh, in, you can see, uh, the Lennar lots that, uh, were the Tri-Marc rezones, a lot of work going on on those properties right now, along with , uh, Neighborhood I and K, the other two new neighborhoods north of Byron are beginning to see a lot of civil improvements as well. So we continue to expand out there, and just a reminder that, uh, we're continuing to review the Mountain House Sports Center at the Mountain House Logistics Center, again, the real challenge there is, uh, uh, continue to review the parking demand, because it would take up a good chunk of the parking available for that entire commercial center, and so we're, you know, having to look at hours of service and things like that to make sure it's not gonna negatively impact, negatively impact the remainder of the site. Uh, don't forget our grand opening at the fire station on June, new fire station is June 25th, uh, working on our second water quality basin at the moment, and I think the machines are gonna be out soon analyzing the different methods for rehabilitating Byron Road, you'll be hearing a lot more about Byron Road soon, and trying to get it, uh, up to speed, drivable. Next meeting, we'll be talking in a lot more detail about the general plan update, as a new city, we have to have our general plan completed, uh, within 36 months after, uh, 30 months after incorporation, we're already 12 months in, so we need about 18 months to get our general plan done, as soon as the county's done with their housing element, we'll need to address the housing element as well, but more to come at the next meeting on, uh, the general plan. And, uh, the, the groupie apartment site along the freeway is going through a review for potentially, uh, being more of a detached housing site at this point in time, and then just a reminder, you did approve the MSR at our last meeting, Municipal Services Review, so, big things going on in development, uh, hard to see, but we had some, not, flu's gone, little, a couple little tiny hiccups in COVID, but things are looking good again on the, the COVID front. Reminder that we've now got new solid waste bins available for commercial properties in Mountain House, and I think we got a photo of that on the bottom here, and we're continuing to work on all of our, uh, uh, traffic calming projects right now, and, and working with Samuel King County on bike lanes for our main roads, and, uh, got pavement repairs going on at the moment as well, and working on our new, an upgraded, uh, charging stations and solar panels for our city hall parking lot, and you're gonna be seeing a lot of work on sidewalk replacements, starting when? Next month or two, I think?
It's gonna be about two, three months.
All right, we have, still gotta put up, but we've got all the assessments done now on the next round of sidewalk replacements and repairs. Next slide. Don't forget Juneteenth, starting at 3 o'clock next Saturday, and this Friday is Central Park Cinema. And we will be closed in observance of Juneteenth on Thursday. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No questions, all right, 10.1.
Long, long-range calendar. Next meeting on June 25th, again, don't forget, at 4:30, we'll be having the grand opening for Fire Station One, Two, I'm sorry, Fire Station Two, north of Byron, and we've got our Landscape Maintenance District, uh, public hearing that evening, you know, now that we have two meetings a month, used to be, always did that with a budget, now we're able to split that up into a, a separate meeting, uh, got a number of, uh, consent items, including traffic signal synchronization, that just got moved from the 11th meeting to the, uh, 25th. And then you can see, we've got the Aquifer Storage, LMD I mentioned, state fire hazard mapping, we gotta adopt our fire maps, as every city has to do that, uh, we may or may not, uh, have time to, you know, have a discussion about go requests and update on at the next meeting, and talk about trees, uh, at the next meeting, have a couple final maps, and hoping we can wrap up the final sentence on our French Camp Fire Agreement, uh, as well. We have the option to extend it for a couple years, but we're wanting to go ahead and bring you back a longer-term extension for, uh, French Camp Fire. And, uh, cog meeting this month, uh, the League Quarterly Dinner is on the 26th up in Sonora, and don't forget our State of the City on July 1st and 4th of July, uh, three days thereafter.
All right, council, councilmember comments? Any?
I'll be brief.
Disco?
Um, I need to recall something I said, Mantika does have fireworks, um, that, uh, their city is doing in partnership on 4th of July, 4th of July, so that's the nearest fireworks.
Yeah.
Mantika, not, um, Lathrop, I think Lathrop does theirs on the 2nd, 1st or 2nd, yeah.
Green, anything? No? Vice Martingle?
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that summer camp, the first week, sports week, starts on Monday, the 16th, 11 a.m. to 2 p.m., and right now, we have 65 young people who will be there active, uh, for sports, and I wanna thank Coach Carr for, uh, and, uh, Mr. Juturo as being on-site to help.
All right. City attorney?
I don't have anything to say, babe.
City manager?
Nothing more?
All right, when are we, uh, what's the next meeting, June 25th? All right, meeting adjourned till the 25th.